Would you give me your attention please? Would you stand with me? I'm gonna call a meeting to order. And I'm gonna ask trustee Monk if he will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you can give us yet again to come back together in person as a group. And we certainly hope that everyone who's had troubling experiences with the past year and a half has found a way to make those adjustments. We pray for our school that you give us a little more wisdom than any of us really possess to make good decisions and in accordance with what you have us do. We ask these things in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you, David. Anyone have any public comments? If not, it is so delightful to see such a good turnout of folks at our meeting tonight. It looks like we're gonna have fun. So we do have several things that we need to, business we need to tend to. And one of the first ones is Dr. Terry Easton. We're gonna be swearing him in here in just a moment. But I'm gonna ask him if he will to introduce, he has several guests here. If we'll, will you stand up and introduce your guest? If they could, I think they're still standing outside. Okay, can they come in?
First, let me introduce my, my wife. I wanna thank my wife, Donna Easton, for her love and support through all of this endeavor. She's been a rock. So thank you, sweetie. And then I wanna introduce and say thank you to Mr. Ray Raymond. Thanking him for the opportunity to come down and spend his time and allow me to go through this process. So Raymond and the board, thank you for this opportunity. And I have my longtime friend, Officer Logan here. He's the chief of police at Bullock ISD. So Officer Logan, thank you for being here. Ms. Spurlock and her son, Brett Bennett. I wanna thank him for coming out and offering their support. I think all of you know Terry Spurlock. So thank you, guys. And the best principal in the Kaufman County, my boss, Amy McAfee, and her husband is here. Well, thank you, Ms. McAfee, for coming. Ms. Z. This is Jessica Tukovich and her son, Jonathan. By the way, Jonathan's one of my students. And I want you to remember his name because he's one of the best students in Crandall. And we would like for him to basically probably be a student here at some point. So remember that name. Who else, sweetie? And Mr. Butler, Kenneth Futter, he's my colleague. He works there in the social studies department with me. And Ms. Dark, those are my two teammates that work with me in teaching. And one of the guys that helped me develop my wings, Brad Rogers. Brad and Dad works here at the school, Jerry. That's, that's, that's the little son, but he doesn't look little. And Mr. Johnson is one of my assistant principals that used to be with me over the years. Guy Johnson, thank you for being here. And my nephew, Darren Williams, standing there in the corner along with his girlfriend. Thank you, Darren. And Eric and Bubba, where are you?
They're back.
Okay, Eric and Bubba. Okay, here's, here's Eric. I didn't see you, Eric. Thank you. Eric, if you need anything in reference to any type of supplies, Eric and Bubba. So thank you, guys, for being here. And got one more gentleman, Kenneth Everett. Kenneth has, I've known Kenneth for a long time. Anybody that needs help with mathematics, Algebra I, he's the man. That's, that's, that's the guy that get it done. He's been doing it for a long time. So if I miss someone, I apologize and we owe you lunch or dinner. And because of me being here, I wanted to close and say thanks to Judge Wiley, her husband, Aaron, and brother Joe. They are here. So thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to be here tonight. So again, thank you for having me.
We want you, all of you that are here on his behalf, we want you to know that you're very welcome here at the college anytime. And, and I'm so proud that you're here tonight to support Dr. Easton. Cause I think that he's, he's got, he's kinda excited about this. And, and so we look forward to working with him in the future. And so just thank all of you for coming tonight and, and his support. Okay, at this time, if would, go out here, and this is Judge Randy Daniels.
If you are open office, please raise your right hand and repeat that. I, Terry Easton.
I, Terry Easton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of TVCC Board of Trustees, District Nine.
The duties of TVCC Board of Trustees, District Nine.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
To serve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
To preserve and protect and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
And so help me God.
All right, we have one other item of business that we want to tend to right quick before we go into the business session. And it's, we're gonna talk a little bit early about Mr. Homer Norville. And, and I'm gonna, a few things that I'm gonna have to say about Homer, I'll say them at this time. And then Dr. Jerry will have some remarks. And then I want the board to have opportunity to say whatever you'd like to say on Homer's behalf. You know, Homer was a good person. He was a teacher. He was a coach. He was a Christian. He was a great community leader. He was trustee of this college for 33 years. And most dedicated person I think that you can find anywhere, or you could find anywhere when it comes to concern of education for students. That was his first love, and that's really about what he lived for. Okay, but he also loved TVCC. You just couldn't say anything about TVCC, he wouldn't respond. And Homer sat right here by me for a number of years. And so I got to know Homer not only through this relationship on this board, but Homer and I, we go back about 50 years. And, but Homer had three very successful children, one daughter and two sons. And everybody loved Homer and Norville. And so Jerry, do you have something you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say that it, it was a pleasure working with Homer for the years that I did. He was a role model for me. And he was always sitting there and he was always pleasant and positive, and he always dressed really nice. No matter where we went, whatever, I remember going to New York City on a trip with Mr. Norville a few years back. And it was just always somebody that you always wanted to be around, somebody that you knew cared about the college. And he was always here for us. And, you know, even when it was difficult for him to drive, he was coming down here watching basketball games. I'd meet him at the front of the gym and bring him in and we'd sit together. It was just, yeah, very dedicated, very, the type of person that you always wanna be around. And I'm so grateful that I had the years that I had, the last five years as president of the college with Homer Norville.
All right, I'm gonna go around. Mike, you have anything you'd like, if you didn't know. Okay, Ron, you have anything?
Whenever we heard Homer had passed away, I had told Darren, our son, his graduate at Kaufman, okay? And he said, Dad, he said he was one of the really good guys that he had the opportunity of taking instructions from during that period of time. And I thought to myself, what a compliment that a kid who grew up would have that kind of respect for Homer Norville because he thought he was a true gentleman.
David?
I did not have a doubt of being close to Homer in his own community, living over in Chandler, near Chandler. And Homer up in Kaufman, sometimes that seemed, seemed like we were worlds apart. But I think the first time that I set up this board or came together with Drew 20 plus years ago, the thing I remember about Homer Norville was a warm handshake and a wonderful friendly smile. The last time that I had occasion to exchange trade with Homer Norville was the same thing. So that's the way I remember him, constantly, definitely.
Well, I've got long memories of Homer. Growing up, I grew up in Terrell, but my daddy's back clinic was in Kaufman. So when I was a little kid, I'd run around playing with Homer, he would tell me. And Archie even worked for my dad in the year when I was one of those little kids. So I remember those days. And then, of course, daddy was on this board for years and he would tell me about going to picking up Homer and then coming down here together. And, and of course, Homer and Ray and I rode down here together almost every meeting. Homer was someone that I always knew was gonna be consistent. And we generally agreed on everything, but if we didn't, there was never a problem. We could disagree, but we did very much. Terry, I don't know how you're gonna feel, oh, shoot. Good luck. But we're glad you're here.
Yes.
But I don't think you can do it. I'm gonna try to help you cry. That's right. Thank you.
One of the best experiences I've ever had was having Homer on the board. He was always a warm heart, always kind, spoke, did dress pretty well. Put us all in shame, so to speak. But he cared deeply about the college. But I got to know that he cared deeply about his church, his family, and the things he did around Kaufman. He was a true steward and servant of this community.
Homer was a good friend, loved his cows. We had one thing in common. And I stopped to visit with him time or two at his house. He'd show me his cows. But the main thing about Homer, he put the student first. That was his number one concern, why else is this gonna affect the student? And he feared for him.
Thank you. I have a short biography here that I'm gonna give you a copy of. Go back a little bit more, we're seeing here tonight. Okay, let's do photo auto up first.
Okay.
Let me read what it says on the plaque. This is a plaque, "In loving memory, Mr. Homer Norville, for 31 years of loyal and dedicated service as a Trinity Valley Community College Board of Trustees." And we want you to have this for the family.
Just a bit. Yeah, but no, we were coming for Terry, for Dr. Easton.
Well, that's the board.
Yeah. And so we are just so appreciative of the college and I thank all of you gentlemen that were trustees with him. I, you hit it so spot on, there's nothing to add. Yeah. Dad, you know, the generation that he comes from, education changed your lives. And it, it was important to him, and he saw that change in his life and his family's life. And he wanted that same opportunity for all these students, not only obviously here in Hennepin County, but all the counties you start from. And you know, he is, he's still working hard at some of the different school districts that he wants Trinity Valley Community College in. So he always loved the school, but he was very strong on education. And I'll hear these great stories from people, like you were telling me about, you know, your son, and you hear something. And you go, wow, how many people's lives that he touched? So I'm gonna say that Dr. Easton is up to the challenge. And we look forward to seeing him do that and for the board collectively to keep making those great decisions that you made for this community. And no pressure, President.
Thank you.
No pressure on you either.
Early as our district attorney over in Kaufman County. I suppose, I, I've, I've heard Homer talk about it and brag on you about a lot of things, but he, he was so happy that she ended up being District Attorney of Kaufman County.
Well, I think my mother and my dad, you know, always wanted more for their children. It was so, we, we take it for granted how challenging it must have been for them. And Ray's very modest because he helped along the way during the years with all the different challenges. Him and my mother were great friends and worked together on the shelter.
But she had no choice but.
Yeah, she had no choice but. Yeah, but he knew how to raise that money and get it done. And then Dad was in the background. And the board made the decision to make sure they had diversity when Dad was here. Think he picked well with Dr. Easton, keep up that spirit to make the needed stuff. But yeah, we go back so many years, you know, is why, really, was my third grade teacher. She was only, she was only 18. I think she was a child by the age of 18 when she did that. But yeah, we, we, our families go back a long ways, and her son, we were classmates. We love you guys and we appreciate you for warming, warming. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Raymond, may the family be excused so y'all can get up.
I mean, I would love to hear, you know, I just based on the last meetings on Zoom, but I think y'all got it right.
We have a lot of issues to kind of, we need a lot of help.
Y'all have your own legal team, I know that.
Right. Anybody feel free to leave?
We'll see you. Bye-bye.
All right, we're down to business time, I guess. And so we'll move right into item number four on the agenda, which is President's report.
I, board, I have a few things I'd like to, a lot of this you already know about because I've provided in my updates over the last few weeks. But I wanna mention, spring graduation was a really, really, really good one. We had a record 712 graduates. I think the previous number of graduates that we'd had was like 640 or something like that. So it was a large number of graduates. Included in that, we had 215 dual credit graduates, which was also a record, much more than we previously had. I think we ended up with almost 85 or 86, 81 from Terrell Independent School District, 57 from Athens, 34 from Palestine, 13 from Malicaw, three from Branson attended their graduation ceremony. And we had two from Screer Roster attended their graduation ceremony. So we had a great graduation. It was a rolling graduation, which means that we had them coming in. We didn't have a big audience, but we had them coming in one at a time. And I think they really liked that because they enjoyed being up in front of the stage and being able to cheer on their, their graduates. And I think it was really good. I don't know if we'll do it that way again. It was a four hour graduation ceremony, and I stood up for four hours. And so did Dr. Parnell, and so did Mike Henry. I'm not real sure we could do that again, but we're, we're gonna see what we need to do next time. But it was really a great graduation ceremony. I wanted to mention our enrollment that we have thus far. It's, it's still early for the fall, but we do have a we have an increase in the summer graduation. We have a 9.19% increase in summer thus far. I think I've got this in front of you here, I think it's out there, so you'd have that. And then we still have summer two classes that will continue, registered for classes through July the 7th. And so it's better, it's looking better, it's getting better. We feel optimistic, we feel much better. It's great to have, it's been 14 months since we've been in this, in this facility. It's really great to have you guys here to be able to sit in person. Our fall 2021 graduation is also much better. Right now, we're at 7.21% increase. Enrollment in the fall classes continue through August the 18th. And then we have fall eight week two classes that will continue through October the 14th. Our contact hour funding is way up primarily because last summer we didn't, we weren't able to have contact hour funding for in-service training that we do at TDCJ. And we weren't able to have contact hour funding for our, our summer enrollment at TDCJ because we couldn't have it because of COVID. So it looks better. We're, we feel better about the fall, we feel better about the summer. And, you know, it's not back to normal yet, but it's close. The Bachelor of Science degree in nursing, I mentioned that to you already a couple of times in some of the emails that I've sent out. We're very, very proud of that. That's, we started talking about that, I think, Dr. Reissinger about three or four years ago. We started talking about that when we're talking about moving and renovating the hospital in, in Terrell. And it's, it came into fruition. It's, the last two years, it's taken a lot of work and a lot of effort on a lot of people's part. But Dr. Reed and her staff have, have really done an excellent, excellent job in making that happen. You had to go through three different steps. You had to get it approved by the Nursing Association, National Association. You had to get it approved by the Texas Higher Education Coordinator Board. And then you had to get it approved by SAC CLC. And we did, and we're proud of. I can't say enough about that. Right now, we have 25 students enrolled in that program. We have a maximum of 30 for the fall semester. So Helen keeps telling me it's not gonna be a problem. So we, we, we still got a while to get, a way to go, but it looks very good. Jeremy McMullin, which some of you know, was here a few, few years ago at TVCC as a president at Grayson. He called me the other day thanking me for congratulating us on what we had done. And he asked me, who did it for us? And I said, what do you mean? He said, didn't you contract that out to be done? And I said, no, we, we did it internally. And he said, I paid $50,000 to have it done at Grayson County Junior College. I haven't told Helen that yet, but I'm going to. She's probably watching us on TV tonight. She, she did, she did, she did more than a great job. She did excellent, excellent, excellent job. And I feel very good about what we're doing there and where we're going with that. I just had to throw in that part about Jeremy calling me because I, I couldn't get over it. I knew that, I knew that we were saving a lot of money. But Jeremy said he had a consultant that did everything for him at Grayson. And he didn't, and we didn't do, we didn't do that at all. The Board Budget Committee, I wanted to mention that. We did have a meeting last Thursday, it was a good meeting. We, we're gonna talk a little bit tonight about some of the things that we talked about at that Board Budget Meeting. And we have another one scheduled for Thursday week, I believe that's July the 8th. And then we'll probably end up having another one in a week after that, or, you know, a few days after that. We'll end up probably having three or four budget, Board Budget Meetings before we bring to you the, the budget in August, I'm sorry, in July. And then for you to approve in the mid-August meeting. Uh, we have, our next scheduled board meeting is July the 26th. And I think unless somebody has any questions for me, that's pretty much, other than some of the things I've provided in my updates, that's pretty much all I've got. Any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions for Jerry, Dr. Jerry? If not, we're moving to item number five, consider the minutes of the April 46th, 2021 board meeting. Do I hear a motion that would prove them as they were presented, or do you have any additions or corrections? Jerry makes motion to accept them, and Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion, if not all in favor, say aye. All who hold like sign, motion carries. Item number six, consider business financial and investment report for March and April, for March and April of 2021.
I'm gonna turn, turn that over to David Hopkins.
Y'all have to have a copy, let me, first off, back. As of April, the, as you might expect, the revenue is still down, or whatever. Based on what I've seen, as I just looked it up, we're already over 12 million in tuition. We're, you know, 1.4 million dollars below this time last year. And course, funding decreases, of course, some housing and food services, so forth. Again, I'll talk about this at the end. We intend to cover that, the per funds. Now, a little further on revenue compared to last year, the Killman property donation was in there last year. And the Terrell ADC money was part of the revenue last year, which of course is back this year, so about those differences. Yeah, the salary and benefits pretty much the same. The big difference there is the Christmas bonus that we had one year, like, prior year. Your M and L, again, led by travel, is still down. Haven't done much traveling this year, a lot of our expenses are still down. Which I guess is a good thing. We, we're gonna have quite a bit of money left over at the end of this year. And I did wanna point out, the Board Budget Committee has seen this. And I do have projections to the end of the year in here, right next to the actuals. And as I told the BP, man, everybody take a deep breath, but it's, at this point, again, these are just projections. We're looking at $8.9 million. Now, it sounds like a lot, but we have to think about some things, and we'll talk about that because we've got three and a half billion within the budget in contingency and cap reserve. Proud of that, that's three and a half. You've got 1.4 billion from the summer. You've got 1.4 million from the summer of last year, which is in plan in a couple of agenda items here, that we brought in as lost revenue, the herd money that's going to show up, I think it's in May. And so we just kind of had a perfect storm, some of this is going to hit this year, and plus the, the under expenditures this year, and the other herd money that we're going to bring in for the fall and spring. And so I was going to go to the next slide unless anybody has any questions. Next one should be, I believe it's cash, we'll go to the second page. Not much change in cash between March and April. Couple of things I did want to point out, you see the cap reserve is at 16 million, 17. Can we continue to transfer the monthly amount, 1.9 million that's in the budget? This body approved paying off the bonds, you'll notice at the bottom of that page, you see that 2.4 million in the bond account. Our, our paying agent couldn't move as fast as we were prepared to, and so I think the first couple of days in May had got paid off, but paying agents, we called them as soon as that Board Meeting was over, the next morning, we were transferring money, but they weren't quite ready for us, so it was a couple of days later. Next page is, again, your investment report. Again, the cap reserve there is 1617, it's about the same. We've been billing that monthly. The following page is the capital reserve activity, and there's not much going on. I know y'all are going to be talking about some of this tonight, but you see the architect fees for the parking lot, that's the only thing that's come out of here, 17,450. You see the monthly transfer at the top, and one record tally out because we lag them up on the transfers after we know what the expenses are. Does anybody have any questions about the cap reserve? I could point out how much money we've got in there to this line of money. Two months worth of over 25,000, the first one there is April. And y'all have any questions, other than the payroll and stuff, my distinguished colleagues can answer those. It's my purchases. The next slide is for March. Again, UIT purchases and all this stuff are there, some refinance. You'll see the capital lease payment down at the bottom of the fitness center. Did want to point out, I believe this next budget year, we may have talked about this budget, I'm not sure, but this next budget year will be the last of those payments. So, and obviously Board Budget Committee, that'll be the only thing you'll see in your debt since we paid off. The next slide, I did want to take a minute, this is the one I cheated you on last month. This is the amount of herd funds, I know this is a subject that we've been talking about for the next two years. Sister Leroy has provided us, these, these are the things that we've drawn down thus far, out of the three sets of herd money, and I'll talk more about that in a minute, $350,000 in expenses, the room and board refunds, most y'all recall that from last year, out of this grant, and then we had lost revenue for the summer and TDCJ salaries, and that totaled 1.86 million. And we update this every month, and we felt like it was something that was important to bring to the board. It's a lot of money. The next slide, this is the one I wanted to spend a minute on. Looking down the road, this is the money that's left over in the herd. You see, you see the three awards on the left-hand side, 932, it should be 620 by the line, 3.8 million and 4.8 million. All of herd one money has been spent, we're into herd two, and going down the page, what you see in the red are expenses that we are committed to, we have some expenses we haven't drawn down, we have the LPC position that we committed to pay out of herd. And the next group are this past fall and spring's estimated revenue, you can tell by looking at those numbers in the sheet, it really hasn't changed much, we're drawing it down by semester, as, as allowed by the DOE. And the next page is, we never got to this, I don't think much of Board Budget Committee, but we projected out for 2021, lost revenue. That's going to be a part of the budget. And the two things I'll show you there is you see the two 1.6 million dollar figures, that's the amount of contact hour success points and so forth that the state has slated as on. I say slated because they figured out we got herd money, and they didn't, they used the term hold harmless, but they sort of forgot that. So what I wanted to show you was, projecting this out, and you hear that enrollment's going up, my estimates are that, you know, I've been very conservative, but even doing that, in worst case scenario, we're only $83,000 short of covering that loss for the second year, '22, '23. And I believe, again, what I'm seeing with enrollment and tuition fees and so forth, I don't think these numbers are going to be as bad as I projected, again, just being conservative, just in case. And I want to stop there, is, does anybody have any questions about that? This is the first time we've been able to see this. And I'll, I intend to update this every month as we go along every semester, and as we draw money down, what I, what you'll see is it moved to the sheet before, and we'll just roll this forward out of the two years, and I mentioned the Budget Committee, and the CFOs, as we talk, has become a lot more strategic in the way that we're going to use this money because of the contact hour laws. And that's what we're trying to do. We're not making any more purchases, we do have a couple of commitments that they threw on us in herd three, that we've got to talk about among the staff, they didn't say how much money we had to spend, so I'm not too concerned, but that's kind of where we stand on herd. And that's all I've got, unless y'all have any questions.
Maybe, I think for myself, it's important that I see a set of financials without herd money. What can we count on in the future that we're going to have available? Because this, this pot's going to dry, well.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I, I don't want us to adjust our spending to herd money, but that's not our, that's.
That's right.
And so I, I need to see a set of financials without it, and understand what we got and what we can count on in the future. Does that make sense?
It does. Of course, in the financials, I have to record it as a source of funds, but I can always tell you going forward, we have drawn down a big dollar yet. It'll, when it hits in May, what I can do is, you know, I can pull it out at the bottom so you can kind of see.
I need, I, I need a way to visualize.
Yes. No, it is important, and that's why I want to bring this up, is because well is going to run dry.
Yes, sir.
At some point. But just, that's why I wanted to point that out, when you see those estimated numbers, that it, when I give you projections, I want to show you everything that's coming in, and I do see where you're coming from, and I'll, as we go through the rest of the year, I'll, I'll try to find a way to pull that out so you can see both.
Thank you.
You bet.
David, that prior slide, I believe, I think it's that one, that, that brackets, that herd money, but round number, it's about, a little shy, $4 million for each of this year and next year, that'd be pretty close.
Oh, as far as what they allocate it is?
Yes.
It's up at the top of that slide, the first herd was only 932,000, that's gone. We had 3.8 million, we've got 2.9 of that left, around two.
Right, 3.8.
Yes, sir. The 4.8 is the last. Yeah. Well, they piled it all together, it's really, it's one pot of money now, and well, even when you look at the drawdown, it's just one big pot of money. And the way they, the, the guidelines that we've gotten is, this last bit, the 4.8, maybe 11th, the 14th is when that became available, you have one year to spend it, but you can get a one-year extension.
You get it, or you can ask for it?
Well, you can draw it down, the, the grant period, as it stands initially, is one year, which is next May. Now, they've got some verbiage in there that's a little tricky, but obligated, not obligated, and all that, but they, they are saying they are giving a no-cost extension of one year, only on the institutional side. And I think, again, that's my opinion, I think that's what the state is looking at, between your first year and that second year extension, to, to make up for that contact hour. That was what was in their mind at that point.
Great. Have a comment. I think you and your staff have done a great job in laying this out, so very good, clear. My question, what happens if you don't spend all the money? Are we stuck with that, that we're supposed to send it back?
Oh, I'd take it back.
Okay, so are we better off in spending what they send and ask us to use those monies as, as a pay?
Well, if, if we get down, if we were so fortunate that things went well, and my figures were wrong, but you know, right now, we don't even have enough to cover. But you always have the option, and they're encouraging us to, you can always give it to the students. So in my opinion, if, rather than give it back, if we got down to that point in the second year, I think we want to give it to the students. And that, you know, they, they encourage that, obviously.
Anyone else have any questions about the financial investments? If not, I hear a motion, it may be proved as presented by David. Jerry makes that motion, Terry seconded that motion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item number seven, Consider and Discuss Construction of Additional Parking at the Terrell Health Science Center.
Would we, Randall? We do, we have Randall Scott here with us. Randall, you will come forward, where, where are you?
There we are.
Oh, there you are. Right, we've been, as you guys know, we, we talked about, three years ago, when we talked about the Health Science Center and renovation, we talked about the possibility of this parking lot, but we decided that we would wait until the, until the work was done, see how much it cost, make sure that we didn't run into any problems that we didn't foresee initially, and, and we done, we've done that. And so we ended up with, well, Randall can tell you, but we ended up with $800,000 left over, and so we think that we can use that for the parking lot. Come forward, Rand.
I've got some plans we'd like to present.
Okay. Okay, you do whatever you want to, Rand, you're a big guy.
So for 13 years, I've been coming and watching you guys give plaques out, honor other people, and, and I never see anybody honor you guys back, I'm sure people do, but it was a, it was honor and privilege to partner with you on the design of the Health Science Center, and I think it turned out amazingly well, I think, I suppose everybody will agree to that. In honor of that, we've had some project plaques made with each of your names, those of you who were members of that, so I don't have one for new members. But, I want to hand them out.
Thank you very much, sir.
Let me say something just to me, and I want to thank, I want to thank Randall for the work he did, and our entire team. When you were talking about, Jeremy talking about Helen, all I thought about was he just didn't know we had our secret weapon, and Helen is our secret weapon. She's held that nursing school together through thick and thin, and I will always appreciate that. I think that, I tell people in Terrell, having, having, when I came to Terrell 34 years ago, came back to Terrell to start practicing, yes, this facility, you know, it, it changed a lot of years, and most of it's gotten better. But I tell people in Terrell now, when you walk in this building now, it is an old wow moment, and you have to have appreciated going to those people. And it is literally an old wow moment, and, and I think we need to, to be thankful for that and appreciative, that we had the opportunity to do it. There were a lot of people that were, that worked toward that in cooperation, including the city of Terrell, and that took a little while, but it really is an old wow moment. I encourage everyone to go and take it.
Hope you guys enjoyed those, put them up on your walls, and remember what a great thing you guys did for the students of TBCC, because I think it's amazing project. All right, tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the parking lot expansion. As Dr. King said, we value engineered the parking lot expansion out, it wasn't an alternate at the time. The cost of it's gone up a little bit since we originally estimated it. The alternate itself is about 450,000, as it stands today, the cost is about 563, so, but that's down the price of waiting, things never going to be on the most of the book. And we get the site plan up?
Next one?
Yes. So what you see there in the red, hatched in the red at the bottom, is the parking lot expansion. The gray parking is what's there and what was able to be put in in, in the original construction. And we had the preliminary design done for the expansion, at least the part in the bottom left-hand corner, remember at the time, we had a professional building there, so it was decided that we needed to preserve that money for unforeseen conditions in the building that we didn't know much about, which was a wise thing to do, I think. Anyway, at this time, there's still money left in the budget, and the college has decided that we like to move forward, proposing that, we had bid out, we had five bids come back, we're, we're proposing integrity contractors at roughly 562,000. And so that's where we're standing there, there was an add alternate in this for an additional 33 spaces, this is going to buy us basically 152 new spaces, so with 117 that we currently have, that'll be of the, the site will have 169 parking spaces if we just did the base bid. And we can do an add alternate for the other 33 spaces, and that will get us to 312. So that's a poor decision. Scope of the work is new concrete paving, striping of the paving, now there's parking lot lighting, the city requires a certain amount of landscaping, their visual ordinance, their landscape ordinance. We have conduits to a future monument sign out on the street, see the west of our parking, and it completes the original bus drop that we originally wanted to put in, but didn't have the money for originally, so now that's part of the parking lot that you see there in red hatched area. Purple hatched area is, is the future 33 spaces, and then we left a space of, for approximately 14,000 for the future building to the south. So that's kind of the overview of, of the parking lot expansion, and we think we've identified the best value contractor, which is Statelez Contractors out of town. And then if you want to talk about the rest of the financials, I think it's probably more, you're going to put that together, so you probably have better information about that if anybody wants to go through the rest of the numbers. Any questions?
Is there a recommendation up here? Is there a recommendation, we have 33 spots, I mean, what's the value of doing that now?
About 92,000, if it's a question? About 92,000. Which is really a pretty good value, that's 33 spaces. Which is really a pretty good value, and that's 33 spaces. If you have $3,000 in space, that's, uh, that's well below what the market is right now.
David, do you want to talk about the bid process itself? Thank you, Randall. Thank you for the plaque. That's really nice. Very good. You were a big part of that as well, by the way. You know that.
We've been working together on it for 13 years.
As part of the process to purchase the additional parking, we put together with Lilana, myself, and Randall, as a team, we put together an R and B, sent it out to the world. We probably send out 50 to 60, maybe even 100. And, uh, and some of those folks that, that are on our mailing list are advertisers, and they advertise it in their publications. So, it went out pretty widespread. We had four general contractors, and then a, uh, painting company returned bids to us. Basically built in two groups, uh, the lower group and the higher group. We asked for guaranteed max price. When we, uh, built this building, that was the methodology that Ford, we chose, uh, to build the building back. So, I chose as a part of the process to continue that, so the pricing that we were telling you to get down are guaranteed max prices. And it's what we asked for. We didn't get it in one of the cases, but, but, uh, at the initial bid, but we've got guaranteed max prices from all of the contractors at this point. Integrity is by far the leading, uh, cost of most effective, uh, to do the work for us. I've rarely talked to, uh, others parties that use contractors, and they, and they speak very, you know, they did the job. They did good. But I, I can tell you that I got some really glowing reports about it. Never heard of, never used them. Don't know much about them, but these folks that I contacted, uh, had used them for building schools, uh, state schools, mostly in the high school and the lower grades, but they had built 10 to $30 million projects for these folks, and they just loved them. One guy said, "I won't tell them guys this, but they're the best contractor I love. Worked with these guys." They're honest. They're straight. They don't try to make a lot of money at each job, but they did really good work, so, so I, I am, uh, as many problems as we've had, uh, in that arena with this, um, project, I'm looking forward to trying to work with some that say that they're the best. And if Helen was here, or she's online, uh, after we interviewed those folks, the excitement was just building in her. She was so excited about these folks. And, uh, so I'm, I'm pleased to offer this to you. We've still got some issues there at the campus that we've got to deal with. We've got some movement issues still over where the old building connects to the new one, and we've, and we've got to deal with. As a staff member, I wanted to contribute the most money that I could contribute to make sure that we finish this job in budget. But I would love to finish this entire party. But it's not my job necessarily to tell you that we ought to do this in my, in my heart of hearts, but I know we still got some more, uh, construction work to do there. So, but we really do need a parking lot as its proposal.
If you'll, if you'll look on the second page of the memo that was sent out to you, we have, what, $936,810 dollars that's available. That's funds available from the Health Science Academy and from the Health Science, uh, construction, uh, construction of the facility, Health Science. Of that, we're talking about spending, um, $562,777 for the, for the, for the parking that we're talking about, not the, not the 33 parking spaces, but the standard parking. And then, as you can, there's some other pro, there's other costs that are expected to be in there as well, that you can see on that page. Um, the, the final figure, I guess you could say, the remaining board approved funds, if we were to do, do the, this parking lot, and not the additional 33 spaces, but the standard parking, we would have $232,593, like, in the, in the overall budget. So, what Randall, and I think what, uh, David are trying to tell you is that we got some more money to spend. And Randall, you might, you might expand on that.
So, you may remember, um, we had some issues with a part of the slab that dropped nine inches. And we removed the slab. We did work under that slab and put a new slab back in. And before we did that, we talked about, as a group, whether or not we should put in a subsurface drainage system because of the amount of water that was showing up after we had taken that slab out, which you guys decided to do at the cost of $15,000. And the good news is that slab and the gray beam that is attached to are moving homogeneously. The new addition that we did for the multipurpose building, uh, community room, is basically a pure and beam combination, so it's not going to move. It's not moving, but we're getting a little bit of movement that's going on in that existing building. Uh, it's raised about an inch and a half where the connection is between multipurpose building that we added and the existing building. Good news is that the slab we put in, that existing part of the building, is moving homogeneously with this foundation. But, um, normally, when you build a building, in my experience, and every geotechnical, structural engineer I've ever talked to, once three to five years has gone by, that foundation is pretty much stabilized. The moisture has moved out from underneath the foundation, and it's not going to move around much. But this one continues to move, uh, and about all we can do is react to that. There was no way to know going into the project if it was going to move, how much it would move, uh, but it is moving some. And you need to go in there and put some, um, some aesthetic covers over the joints where they're moving, uh, and, and make some minor cosmetic changes on the inside to obscure any further movement that's going to continue to happen. So, that is why there, the $232,593 at the bottom is a, just a fund that, uh, we're going to need to do a few things there at that portion of the building to try and mitigate that issue. Uh, we talked to the geotechnical engineer. His recommendation was to put, uh, a moisture barrier, a vertical moisture barrier in front of the existing portion of the building, to try to stop water mitigation from going underneath that slab, even, which is what's causing the incident. Um, and then inside, we need to do some cover plates, modify some, some minor changes to ensure finishes cover up that movement. Um, and so, anyway, that's what we're recommending. We reserve that $232,000. How much of that is a takeout, I don't know yet, but we needed a general contractor on board to be able to assimilate that work. We need somebody who can get in there with us, do a little bit of investigative work, and help us with the final scope that needs to be done there. The, uh, the stoop that's outside the west door between the community room and the existing building also heats, uh, it's flat work, so it's, there are not really any work, uh, underneath it that's done structurally to keep it moving. And moisture has mitigated underneath there. It raised it to the point where the door wouldn't open. And David and his group removed the stoop as potential, what we call DG, which is, granted, is decomposed, and lowered that so that people could get out the door in a matter of egress. It's a good thing. But ultimately, what needs to happen there is that needs to be a structural stoop that is built like the community room, so that it won't move. According to the geotechnical engineer, uh, there's a, like, underground stream that runs under that existing portion of the building that's causing, he told us that a long time ago. It causes that thing to heat some, and there's just really not much we can do about that, except just to react to it and try to mitigate it as best we can. So, that's, that's, that's what this money is intended to do.
Is that round adequate?
I think it is.
More than adequate?
I hope. I just don't, I, I need a contractor in there working in tandem with us to, to get some pricing to go.
If we knew there was a moisture problem to begin with, why wasn't a moisture barrier installed when this was put in?
Because typically, a building that's been sitting there for 50 years has done, has stopped moving. In, in the geotechnical engineers I've talked to, structural engineers, in my experience, typically, a building, uh, for about three to five years has stopped. Whatever movement's going to happen has already happened, and the moisture has percolated out underneath the building. So, what you need underneath the building is you need constant moisture, just like in your house. You know, if it dries out, it gets wet, that house, that foundation's going to heat and it's going to move. And, uh, there's really not much you can do. We're not sure, eh, that that's going to solve the problem. It's, it's a, it's an idea, okay? Something you want to try. But it's like when you buy a used car, or you buy a used building, or a used home. You do the best you can to investigate what the issues are, and try to deal with them when you're in the construction phase, or when you're in the home buying phase, or, or when you're totally empty and buy a car, but you can't, you can't know what all the issues are going to be with existing buildings like this. And there was no reason to believe that there would be an issue there. It's just we expected that building to be stabilized after 50 years of being in place.
Will there not be any warranty of that?
I don't think so. You know, it's an existing building. So, the foundation, the problem is the foundation underneath that building is not a quality foundation. It's a lot like the type that you have at your house. Most houses are slanted and curved. And they're subject to the whims of moisture and drying out of clay, which expands and contracts. When it does that, it heats and, um, and sinks. And when we were doing the building, the slab in this area had dropped nine inches. So, we tore that out, put in select fill, we put in a drainage system, which is all I know to do, and put a new slab in there after we filled it in and got all the, and fortunately, that's all moving homogeneously together now. We're not having a difference. So, we had nine inches of drop in that slab, and, and the gray beam, the foundation that were, that were supported. But, um, it's moving a little bit now homogeneously, and there's just, there's really nothing you can do about that to stop that. You know, if the foundation sinks, you can put jacks underneath it, and you jack it up and support it. But for heat, there's no way to really pull it down or keep it from heating, except to try to mitigate, try to, try to, uh, minimize the, uh, moisture that you put on it. And like I said, I, I've never used that before. That was just something that the geotechnical threw out as a possibility. It's kind of like a tree root guard, if you know what that is. So, we're, we're looking at whatever opportunities we can find to try to mitigate that. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's anyone who can really stop it. It's just something that we're going to have to deal with over the years.
If, if there's no other questions, I guess what we're asking is for you to be able to authorize us to enter into a contract with, with a guaranteed maximum price that's been determined here with integrity contractors using these excess available funds from the Terrell Health Science Center and the Academy project. I can answer that question kind of in general. Um, I think they didn't give a guaranteed maximum price. And when they came back in, they, they ended up giving a guaranteed maximum price, and it was higher. Also, some of the, they didn't have the reputation that integrity had. Many of the same individuals that worked for the previous company that did the construction for, for us there, were the same companies that, were the same employees that worked for Terrell. Does that answer your question in a nice way?
It, it moves in that direction.
Okay.
I guess I'm curious that, uh, what you're saying, that they're 505, that's, that's a material difference, you know, it's more than 10% higher for the integrity. And if they were deemed unsatisfactory?
Okay.
Is that what we're getting down to, or are you saying that 505, which is not their guaranteed max?
I think I'm saying both.
It's, it's, it wasn't their guaranteed maximum price. They gave that number in their, in their bid.
It was not.
And then we, David asked them the question in the interview that we had with them. "Are you willing to guarantee that price?" And so, they said, "No, that's a budget number." And so, they said, "We'll get you our final number in, uh, Thursday." It was a day and a half later, noon, and they came back. 700,000, seven changes. So, their number really wasn't 505, it was 700,000.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at, the, the price. Really was not 505, the guarantee and the sign comments that you did.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anyone else have any questions?
And this does, according to the, the, the log stop channel, the additional 33 spaces, Sarah.
What does that?
Now, this is the base bid. It's 152 spaces additional. Gives us, in the, which gives us 269 total spaces. The other 33 would give us a total of 312. But we discussed that pretty much at length with, um, with Helen, and I think she's, she's raised up the top of the, the base bid. And that's hard to say that we couldn't have the other 33 later, even, even what this contractor's on.
I'd feel better about the other 33 if I knew what the other, where we're going to end up.
Right, yeah, we were too. It's kind of why we recommend the base for now. Let's see what the other's going to cost, and then we'll know when we've been able to.
I think we can leave with that. We do, I hear a motion to approve it.
Yes.
Okay, Steve made the motion, Mike seconded the motion. Any further discussion? No, I'll say aye. All opposed, like, like sign. Motion carries. Adam number eight, consider and discuss. Consider and discuss the final 505 of 2022 Budget Workshop Tax Rate Hearing and adopted in September, board meeting.
I think David Hopkins, again, has provided you with that information. If anybody has any questions about it, this is pre, this is a little bit different than we did, have done in the previous years. Um, last year, we were able to do it a little bit differently as well, but we're able to get it all done in August instead of having to wait. In the last, previous years, we had to go into September. At this time, we're able to get it all done in August. You want to talk about that for a second, David?
Yeah, I, I don't know that this legislature has changed anything since last time. We're only required to have one public hearing, and unlike previous years, we can also vote on the tax rate at that second hearing. So, assuming that we are able to meet somewhere around August 11th, and take that vote, and we then have to place it in the newspaper, and that gives us time to meet August 30th, um, timeframe, so that we can both adopt the budget and the tax rate after the public hearing. If something has changed that I'm not aware of, I might certainly come back to you, but I'm not aware of anything. You know, of all the prior years, we had to go into September because we had had two public hearings and all that, and two postings in the newspaper.
You know, of all prior years, we had to go into September because we had had two public hearings and all that, two postings in the newspaper. So that's, that's the plan for now.
We would ask for approval of that.
Okay, of that, of that date.
Yeah, the calendar.
Okay. Dr. Charlie makes a motion. Ron seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Add them number nine, consider and discuss the engagement letter for annual.
David, you wanna discuss that?
As we do every year, this is the engagement letter for Gollum Morgan. We'd like to get it done now because they, they like to come in and do a little bit more prior to hearing, which is helpful. The price, they're, they're pretty much the same, sixty-three, five without the state single audit, which we did not have to have this last year. If we had to have that, that'd be another six thousand. And again, this obviously comes from the board because they're your auditorium. I think they've done a pretty good job. Kevin is much, very, very helpful to Stephanie and I and what happens when there's some things. I think most of the board, every year in the interviews, some of the board, most of y'all met Kevin. I think his crew's doing a pretty good job.
Anyone have any questions? Any more questions about? The company? If not, I hear a motion to be approved. So David makes a motion to approve that. Dr. Terry seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Add them number ten. Consider and discuss purchase of two TBCC passenger buses.
Board, this is something that we discussed last year, last summer during the board budget committee meetings. And we decided that because we didn't know, even know if we were gonna have athletics in the fall and the spring of next year, that we would put it on hold. But we're coming back with you again. It's probably a pretty good way to do it here as well, that it did have to wait a year. But we're coming back to you asking for approval to purchase two buses. The, there's some, a lot of justification in here, really kind of boils down to safety. The two buses that we have are currently are thirty-two passenger buses. They were purchased in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. They're, they're, they're not as reliable, they're not reliable, I guess, as, as, as we need for our buses to be. So it comes down to safety. It also comes down to the fact that we are, we've added some programs, some athletic programs, which, which, which will increase the usage of buses in this next year. And it also really comes down to an investment. We're spending, if you look on the second page of the memo that was sent to you, we're spending, in seventeen eighteen, we spent fifty-nine thousand four hundred and three dollars on leasing buses. In eighteen nineteen, we spent sixty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-nine leasing buses. In nineteen twenty, we spent less because we didn't have athletic programs after March, early March. And then in twenty, twenty twenty-one, this year, we didn't spend as much either because we didn't have, the seasons were cut short and we didn't have as much going on. On the average, I think we're probably gonna be spending about, in the future, about sixty thousand a year on, on leasing, leasing buses, because the two buses that we have are not, are not enough and, and probably to some degree unsafe, in my opinion. And so if you look at it from an investment standpoint, if we, we probably will have to spend some for leasing in the future, just, we're gonna have to because of conflicts that come up. But if we spent seventy-five percent of that sixty thousand a year on, on new buses, that would be forty-five thousand, about forty-five thousand a year. In ten years, we pay off two new buses. Eleven years, we pay off two new buses. So I guess looking at it from an investment standpoint, if we think it's the, it's the right thing to do going forward, looking at it from a safety standpoint, we think it's the right thing to do and we just, we're, we think it's time. So I guess, now I know there's a lot of information in there. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let David talk about the HIRF money and how that's working. Basically, we're using HIRF money to pay for this. We're not using budget money. We're not using any, we didn't put any budget, money in the budget this year for it. Because like I said, we didn't know when we're making budgets out this year, we were ready to have athletics. So we're gonna be using HIRF money and I'm gonna let David explain that.
Let me ask one question.
Sure. I think we'll use them twenty years, twenty-five years. These are diesel, these are diesel buses, the ones that we had before are gasoline buses. And diesel buses are supposed to go five hundred thousand miles or more. And so I think they'll go, correct, I could be corrected, but I think they'll go twenty-six. I won't be here in twenty years.
Say they won't go that long.
I won't be here. But I got an expert back there in the back of the room that tells me that those, these diesel bus, buses will last. How long, Leon? How many miles?
You can do five hundred.
Okay, five hundred thousand miles.
Depending on which engine you get.
We're gonna keep the T O, two older ones? We're gonna use them for local purposes, transporting?
But you said a moment ago that in your opinion, they were unsafe.
I'm not gonna, I'm not, we would not take them out of town. We would use them for local purposes. I, I, it's unsafe when you're driving to New Mexico or when you're driving to Arkansas or when you're driving to Louisiana or when you're going down to South Texas. But when you're going to, at this high school gymnasium or fieldhouse, it's not unsafe. That's, so our recommendation, again, we, we spent a lot of time over the last couple of months looking at this, this. We believe that you can buy used buses, you can buy new buses. We believe that you can buy better, you can probably get a better deal with used buses. I think Leon has spent, you've been to about four or five different locations looking at buses already. They're out there. It's kind of like buying a used car or a new car. You just have to decide which direction that you want to go. And Navara College just got through buying, how many did they buy? Four? They bought three at Navara. I have a picture of those. Norma, you wanna bring those up? But Navara College, and they bought two used ones and one new one. And the two used ones they bought were two thousand and seventeen models. And I forgot how many miles Michael Landry said he had on them, but they're very happy with them, very pleased with them. So I mean, I think it's, it's a, it's a decision that would have to be made at some point. But what we would like to do is have that opportunity to make that decision. We'd like to have a, we'd like to have a cost not to exceed five hundred thousand and for us to buy what we believe would be in the best interest of the college moving forward, where that could be used or could be new. Those, the buses that you see on the screen, those are the buses that they bought over, over at Navara College. You see the, the bulldog on the outside, we would have that. I think that costs, what, I think that fifteen, I think fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to have a full TBCC all the way around it. So everybody knows who we are and where we are. It's good advertising for the, for the college. That would also be included in, in this five hundred thousand dollars. And David, why don't you go ahead and mention about the HIRF funds?
Because, Ward, as we discussed, we have drawn down this year of the funds from last summer. One million four hundred seventy-two thousand five ten. To do this this year, what my recommendation would be is to do, whatever the cost winds up being, we would move the revenue and the expense into the budget to reflect your action. You took it. And buy it out of those, that lost revenue money that's excess from last year is the way I would propose it. And I believe we did talk about keeping only one whole bus.
Well, we talked about maybe keeping both of them, but one would probably be the only one that we'd ever use. I mean, unless it was for around campus.
David, help me here. You, you've already projected the HIRF money in its entirety for just next budget year and one follow. So, so how, how this, how this five hundred thousand dollars for buses, we're likely to have?
Well, when we say HIRF money, we're not, this is the money that we received. The, the action that we took with HIRF was to collect lost revenue. Now that that cash has come in, what are we gonna do with it? You know, in my projections, you saw the excess, the way this would work out is all that money comes in this year, the one one four is excess, not even related to this budget here. You and I have talked about that. But instead of having eight million dollars left over, we'd have five hundred thousand less left over. Give it back, we did that. I just wanna be sure, but we're not buying this with HIRF grant money.
Yeah. No, you're not.
Okay. I don't look good in orange, so. But that's, I, I guess what I'm saying is that, that excess funds, this would back that off by five hundred thousand dollars, what we would have left from that money that we brought in.
And, and we believe if we spend this five hundred thousand, it's an investment, we're gonna spend less in expense over the next three years.
We should.
And, and that's, you know, I think the justification for it. And, and you know, hey, I don't want my kids going off on, on trips and plus I gotta work.
Well, even if we were doing the same thing, you still got two soccer teams you gotta get somewhere, even if nothing else happened.
So, Lee, I wanna ask one more question. If you have buses like this, who are your drivers? What's the program for that, or they, they got other jobs here or they full-time drivers? Professional drivers? Well, I'm your second driver, I'm the director. We have Donnie Morrison, who's been with us since two thousand nine. He drives, he's retired tech stock. Okay. We have Jill Mosley, as you all know, who drives Harson's one. And we have a new driver. So we've actually got four drivers in our pool now. We all feel good about all that. So yes, that's true. So.
But you also have coaches driving as well, is that correctly on?
They can, yes. So, Dr. King, my final question on that is that what you're looking for is approval without specifying exactly what those are and buses are along the lines of what we've talked about here, share. Oh, two, five hundred thousand dollars. Comfortable, we can do that?
I am comfortable.
There's no conflict with, with, the board doesn't know what it's really approving specifically or is it caused to be from some state vendor? You sort of getting at?
It will be, it will be obviously a legal purchase from sta, from that standpoint. But there's no way for us to know right now exactly what bus it is. I mean, it won't, we won't know until the day of.
No, but normally you would, you would get an RFP out there or something like that. We would have bids and then we would talk about it.
But you can't do that with this.
Cannot do that.
No. Because you don't know from one day to the next, what's available, what's not available, what's out there and what's not. If you could, we would. But you can't, I mean, we, 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 we don't know what's out there. We know what's out there today, but we don't know what, what's out there tomorrow.
I'm just confirming that it fits all the boxes as far as the.
It, it definitely, we've already checked with, with the people that we need to check with, it fits all the boxes. You just have to trust us that we're gonna make the right decision and I trust Leon.
That wasn't the issue.
Yeah.
The issue was, is there, is there any, we need to be.
No.
All right. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion in it? Mike makes a motion. Proves, proves it. David, you second motion. All right, motion, then made a check it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Add them number eleven. Consider and discuss faculty contract renewal.
This is something, as you know, Board, we do every year in June, and that is we renew the contracts for our faculty. And we, we have a list of them here. It's basically, we, we do not have any non-renewals. So it's basically, this is a list of our faculty that we are renewing, asking for you to approve renewal for next school year of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
If I hear you, partner, with that? David, you on second? Mike, that motion? Okay. Ron, second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Add them number twelve. Consider and discuss administrators' contract renewals.
This is the, Board, this is the same thing we do each year. As you recall, we, a decision was made in September one of two thousand and sixteen that we would not give any new administrator a contract after that timeframe and we're, we're not. So we're asking that the board approve the renewal of contracts for all currently employed TBCC administrators that were hired prior to September one of two thousand and sixteen for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. And there's a list on here as well.
Okay. Dr. Charlie makes that motion. Dr. Terry seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye.
Let me say one more thing about the bus driver. I just wanna make sure. I would really like for coaches to be out of bus driving business. I recognize there are times that that may have to be the case. But in, in our day and time, the ability we have and our kids doing bad buses, coaches should not have to drive the bus to get their kids.
I don't think they do, Dr. Charlie. I, I, I don't recall any time, unless it was just an absolute emergency somewhere.
I know the strict that they couldn't, but I don't want this to be an expectation.
It's not, definitely it's not.
That'd be more like just a local transfer.
Not even that. I don't even think they do that. They may do it with a fifteen passenger, which they're allowed to do. But I don't know that they even have C D S. Do they have C D S?
I don't know, I just.
I don't think they do. I may, maybe wrong.
Thanks to the next administration.
It is not with us, Dr. Charlie, and I appreciate you saying that.
You don't wanna drive one anymore, do you, Terry?
I don't, I don't, these coaches get back at three or four o'clock in the morning from trips that they go on and you're exactly right.
Yes, right there.
I, I appreciate you saying that, because that's very true.
Yeah. We, we had approval on that play. We've already done.
Yes, we did, I think.
Okay. Number thirteen, consider and discuss personnel updates.
And, and you have a list of those, that these are your standard resignations and retirements and new hires and great adjustments or promotions. I will note that we do have one, one re, retirement that I wish that we did have, and that's Jeff Watson over in Palestine. He's retiring in December and we'll be replacing him. So that's something, he's been here for ten years. Doesn't seem like he's been here that long, but he has. We don't, we, I wish he didn't, but he, I don't think he, he would like it too much if we didn't. So I just ask for the approval for that.
Okay, approval of personnel. Steve makes that motion. Jerry seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Add them number fourteen. Convene to executive session in court.
No, 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 that's not it. This, we didn't do that.
Oh, we didn't do that.
We just, this is, this is it right here. Oh. Consider and purchase.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're not going into?
No, 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 that, that changed.
Okay. All right. Consider and discuss purchase of minimal storage area. What is that? Additional network.
Yeah, it's just, it's called a SAN, S A N, and you probably know about as much of it about as I do. But we do have some experts, we have some experts, I think, that are on the, on the Zoom meeting. This came up, and the reason I added this to the agenda is because it came up last week. We had, this was something that was put in the budget for next year. It was ninety-eight thousand dollars, I think, or ninety-five thousand dollars that was put in the budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two year to purchase. And it came up last week that we could buy that now and we could save twelve thousand dollars. And we, I talked to, do you have the funds in your budget now to be able to do that leftover? And they do. And so we could transfer funds over, current funds over, save twelve thousand dollars. We have to purchase it between now and July the first. That's why I had to put it on the agenda today. And, and then we can also deduct it from next year's budget. Ninety-eight, ninety-five or ninety-eight? I never can remember. Ninety-eight thousand dollars from next year's budget, if we could buy it now. And she provided a list on second page of items that, that she has available in her budget currently that she has not spent, that she is willing to use to go ahead and purchase this with. So I'm gonna stop right there. Alicia, are you on the line? Alicia? Or Brett? They're gonna answer any questions that you may have. You can read what it does here. The device, I remember the device that. The device, I remember the device that we bought, because we bought it, it was one of the first things we bought when I became president, five years ago.
Gary.
Yeah, go ahead, Brett, tell us a little bit about what we're doing.
Okay, you, you, I mean, everything you said was, was really accurate, but we, we have a replacement cycle for all of our hardware devices. And the next year was coming, the time that we needed to buy a SAN. SAN, S A N means storage area network, and to think of it simply, it just stores a ton of data. So, um, I, I'm gonna let Alicia tell you why we needed to purchase one next year. Uh, but the, the numbers were ninety-five thousand that we, if we buy it next year, and, and she, you know, got the, the amount to put in next year's budget, and she, we were, we're gonna request ninety-five thousand dollars. But we found out that there's a Hewlett Packard promotion, she found out, she came to me with this. Through June thirtieth, and the, the salesman kinda let her know at, at a late date, but we found out, we can save more than twelve thousand dollars if we purchase it before June thirtieth. And, and we've got a PO ready to go, that if it's approved tonight, that, uh, it's, it's gonna be sent through tomorrow, we're gonna, we're gonna tell him it's, it's a go, so. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Alicia now, she is our Director of System Support Services, and she is the one that's responsible for maybe sa- saving us this twelve thousand dollars, so Alicia.
Yes, sir. Um, just to kinda give you a short idea of what this is, it is a storage device, but what it stores are files that run our whole organization, because we're a virtualized environment, it runs everything we do. And the device we have now is five years old, and there are companies like Alucion and others that are telling us, you know, it's not up to hardware standards, but either way, it goes end of life, we were able to get them to give us a little bit more leeway on when they end of life it, but in December of this year, the one we have will go end of life, which means they will not support it. So if anything happens with our mission-critical data, we're just stuck, we won't have support for it. So we've gotta replace it either now or next budget year. So we've, we've had a lot of really good pricing and discounts with our vendors, as far as software contracts and things. So I have this money left over, and so I was hoping we could just go ahead and get it, and get it out of next year's budget for you guys.
Thank you, Alicia, and thank you, Brett, anybody have any question? Pretty good deal.
No, what, what they asked.
I, I didn't either. That's why I had her write all this.
I'll make a motion if we do it.
All right, you make, the doctor makes a motion, David second's that motion. Ron Day. Mr. Day, Ron Day second's motion, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Lawana, I'll send you a PO in the morning.
Item number fifteen, oh, we're getting down here just about down and gone. Discuss the twenty twenty-one job classification and salary study.
Board, this is, this came up at our budget meeting that we had last Thursday, and it was, it's part of our plan for moving forward in the future, and I have Janine Dotz here to talk a little bit about it, she's gonna give you a brief overview. What we'd love to be able to see happen is for, um, the, the, the Board to give us a nod, yes, that we, you'd like for us to move forward with this, and that we work out the details with the Board Budget Committee over the next two or three weeks. And, and then come back again to the Board, full Board in August, or actually late July Board Meeting, or mid-August Board Meeting, and talk more about it, and give you more information, and work out whatever details, or whatever needs to be worked out. I will tell you this also, I, I, I brought this up last year, the last summer again, during our budget workshops, and I did, uh, talk about the fact that since we weren't getting a pay raise this year, twenty twenty-one year, that I thought this would be a great year to do this study, and because I just felt like it would be a good time to do it. And so Janine has spent, and her staff have spent hours and hours and hours and hours and hours and hours working on this. They've done an excellent job, they've had everybody review it, VPs, Executive Committee, other people review it. And I just like for her to kinda give you an overview, and then we can kinda go from there and see what you wanna do. Janine?
It's wonderful to be here tonight, I wanna just thank everybody for allowing me the opportunity to kinda share this. It's a lot of hard work that we put into this, I'm very proud of it, um, and I'm proud of the staff. This was a collective effort, uh, for the whole college. Excuse me, so, you know, we went all the way down to the employee level and asked for input from them, and worked our way all the way up to the top, and asked for input, um, all the way through, so it truly is a, a complete college effort, uh, in this, in this study. And I do wanna especially thank my staff, Amanda, Phil Tran, she's my right hand, my right-hand girl, and she did so much work involved in this, we also had a part-time person that used to work with us that came in, and also, that's Casey Brock, she helped out tremendously with this project. Uh, but my other two staff members, they kinda picked up the slack where we weren't able to, to pitch in during this time, and so they, they're rock stars as well, and so without all of us, um, chipping in and doing what we need to do, um, this would not have been able to happen, so. Uh, it's a pleasure to meet you, Dr. Eason, uh, welcome to TBCC. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So really tonight, what I'm gonna do is just kinda introduce things to you, we're gonna go over project elements. I'm gonna talk about some of the important goals that were, um, part of the study. And I'm also gonna just briefly describe a, a phase two process that we also would like to do at some point. Um, I'm gonna talk about the journey, uh, and, you know, just a brief review of the process of how we went through the whole study. Um, I'm gonna give you some of the market study results, um, and the methodology behind some of it, the, and the implementation. And then I'm gonna talk at the end, a little bit about how we got here, uh, and why we have found that this is, um, important for the future of the college. So at the end of twenty twenty, the college president requested that we do a salary study, um, and we also look at, um, our classification system as well. Um, this was in response to a multitude of issues that we are experiencing here at the college, and some of those are attracting new employees, uh, retention of existing employees, we have high rates of internal transfers to new positions, and a lot of those are solely just for money. We have an increasing number of hard-to-fill positions. A lot of these things are impacting our employee morale, and we have inconsistent internal equity comparisons. I can tell you that from the moment I was hired here at TBCC in July of two thousand and fifteen, there, I could sense that there was issues within the compensation system. And I can tell you, from the moment Dr. King became president, um, I have asked every single year to be able to conduct one of these studies, because I feel that, um, passionate about how important it is that we have something in place that is transparent, that is scalable, and that we can use, uh, that will be, that can last for a very long time, this is not something that you just do for one year and it's over, it is something that will continue, um, to be able to be, um, managed. Um, so some of the elements that we addressed are organizational alignment, um, compensation philosophy, job functions and families, market-based salary ranges, career streams, which is gonna be part of our phase two, and internal equity and external competitiveness. So two of the major important goals that we looked at was we wanted to organize jobs in a way that allows us to benchmark salaries against peer institutions, and create a clear job structure. And the reason why we wanna do this is because we wanna be competitive for the top talent, we wanna create transparency and establish regular market assessments. The second goal was to establish a shared language. We wanna create a standard approach to jobs and compensation across the college. The reason why we wanna do this is we wanna operate as one college, identify comparable work at comparable levels regardless of existing titles. The phase two is defining career progression and opportunities. This is something that I have heard from employees, uh, a lot over the years, that there's no career path for a lot of our employees. They come here, they come in as an administrative assistant, or they come here as an executive assistant, um, you know, or another position, and they just don't know where they can go from that point. And so I think it's important that we define career progression and opportunities. Uh, this will help with our leadership pipelines, uh, we're, we're coming into an era right now where we're gonna start having quite a few retirements, and we have a lot of historical knowledge here at the college, that if we don't start, uh, getting those pipelines full, we're gonna start having some problems. So it's something that we need to invest in our current employees here to, um, promote those that are, you know, have that, um, skill set to be able to take us into the future. So, the journey, this is a, just a brief review of our process. We started with the project initiation and the initial meetings. Uh, we collected classification data and distributed PDQs if needed. So back in two thousand and seventeen, I actually did a project, um, that Dr. King gave me permission to do, and that was a classification, um, study. And it just dealt with classification and didn't deal with salaries. And what we did was we discre- distributed a position description questionnaire PDQ to all employees. We asked them to define to us what it is they do on a daily basis. What educational requirements do they feel that if someone was coming into that position tomorrow, what educational requirement would they need to have? What years of experience would they need to have? Um, what knowledge, skills, and abilities does that job require to be able to be done efficiently? We also asked about their working conditions, one thing our job descriptions lacked in for a very long time was ADA language. So there was nothing defined on our job descriptions that said, you know, this job requires you to lift fifty pounds, or this job requires you to sit for an extended period of time. It's extremely important that we have that documentation, so employees come on and sign on with us, and they sign that job description, that they know exactly what they're dating themselves into, and they know exactly what the expectations are. So that was a really big reason why we wanted to do those PDQs, was to, uh, especially get that ADA language, um, in our job descriptions. Um, and another thing that, uh, we had talked, or allowed them to do was to make sure that they told us that there was any job duties that was not listed on their job description that they do on a regular basis, we wanted to know that information. We also asked them to give us their, their, uh, decision level. You know, when they have to make a decision, what level is it that they see that they make these decisions? And we wanted to have more background knowledge on what those positions were doing. So luckily, when we started this project, we had had about ninety percent of that already completed, we had that in our hands, so that saved us a lot of time. Uh, but we did have to go back out, and new employees who did not get an opportunity, we gave them the opportunity to do so, and, and also for people who changed into new positions, we allowed them to be able to review their new position, to give us that updated information. So after we did that, we developed new job descriptions based on data supplied by the employees and supervisors. So after we received the job descriptions back from the employees, after giving them the opportunity, we sat down with every single supervisor, and had a meeting, and had them review every single job description, they probably hate me right now. They don't ever wanna deal with job descriptions ever again. Um, and then after we were done with that, we actually sat down with the VPs, and the VPs actually went through their departments as a whole, and reviewed those job descriptions, uh, because they, they, first of all, wanted to know, what is it that my employees are doing? Even the ones that aren't correct reports, I wanna know more about what these employees are doing. That was a great way for them to get a better understanding of what goes on in their area, so, you know, overall, I think it was very productive, I think they appreciated the process. And in the end, I think we have really great job descriptions that are complete, and are very descriptive of exactly what our employees do. And then we collected job descriptions from other institutions. And then we collected and analyzed that compensation data and conducted a job analysis. We developed, uh, revised classification, and, I'm sorry, we developed a revised classification and compensation plan. We conducted salary adjustment recommendations to move employees into the new plan, and then we developed and submitted a final report to the Vice President and the Executive Cabinet. So we're just gonna go over some of the market study results, so these are very high-level, I'm not gonna get into a whole lot of detail, I know you guys received the market study packet, and that was forty-six pages worth of a lot of information to, uh, take in, so I hope that you guys take the time to read through some of that, I, I know it can read like a VCR manual at times, but I tell you, it's a, it's a lot of information. Um, so for staff and administration, um, so on exhibit three-three, which is also on page eighteen of that, um, salary study, illustrates that the college is on average twenty-three point three percent below market at the minimum of their respective salary ranges for the survey classifications. The survey position differentials range from seventy-seven percent for the Housing Manager classification, two point zero, I'm sorry, point four percent for the Development Officer and Scholarship Coordinator. Of the hundred and eleven classifications with market minimum percentage differentials, ninety-five of those were below market at the minimum. There are sixteen that we don't have data on, and that is for a couple of reasons, either one, the position was paid on the faculty's salary schedule prior, so we don't have data to compare it to. Or the position, the person has been in the position for so long that we just don't have data, um, from when that person was hired on, so. Uh, I know that there was a prior salary schedule that was used even before, um, you know, the ranges that we have now, and the, uh, that information is pretty much obsolete, we don't have, we don't have it just sitting around for us to access. Uh, forty-eight, uh, surveyed positions are twenty percent or more below the respective market minimums. For faculty, which is also found on exhibit three-four, it illustrates that the college on average is twenty-one point six percent below market at the minimum of their respective salary ranges for all studied schedules. Classification. The classification se- system being used, uh, was found to be generally accurate. Um, and that was partly because we did do the classification study back in two thousand and seventeen, it really helped us clean up a lot of that, so. We've still found that to be mainly intact, uh, even today. Um, while we did find some that need to be changed, um, we do, uh, propose some classification changes within the current system, um, and we have provided a comprehensive listing of those, uh, changes, and it can be found on exhibit three-one, which is also on page fourteen. Salary range spread. So on exhibit three-three, the average range spread for each of the survey positions, um, is shown there. The college's range spreads vary, uh, between thirty-four point four percent for the Admission Specialist, and seventy-six point four for the Continuing Education Program Coordinator classification. Overall, the college has a much narrower range spread compared to the market, which is sixty percent. Um, industry practice usually wanna see anywhere from fifty to seventy percent. Uh, based on the institutions that we looked at, um, the average are mainly, I would say ninety-eight percent of them are sixty percent. So we decided, after having discussions with the Vice Presidents, um, we decided to go ahead and just stick with sixty percent. Next, I just wanna talk about some of the methodology behind, uh, the salary study. So target institution criteria, um, and I know that this may be a point of contention with some, but hopefully, uh, I can make sense of it. Um, so, when we chose a institution, uh, we definitely wanted to make sure that it fit one of these criteria. It needed to be competing with a culture for employees either at a lower level or higher level positions. Uh, geographically situated in such a fashion as almost to automatically be considered a competitor. Institutions that are similar in size based on enrollment. Structured, structured similarly to the college and providing similar types of services. Attracted to highly valued employees for one reason or another, and provided readily available data online. Um, and that last one is because of the short timeline that we had in order to get this done, I, we didn't really have the time to go out and contact institutions and ask them to send us their job descriptions if they weren't available online. That would be a very daunting task for that institution to say, can you please send me a hundred and seventeen job descriptions via email? You know, at your earliest convenience, and so, um, that was a, a key thing, was trying to find that information that was readily available for us to use. On our benchmarking methodology, each unique job description was benchmarked against other institutions. Each job was evaluated based on job duties, not title. This one thing that I made sure that it was very clear about when I talked to employees about this study was that this study is neutral. And it, and, you know, in essence, it's completely neutral, it does not know who you are, it does not care how good of a job you do. Um, and that was exactly the way we wanted this to be, uh, it does not take into account any, at all. And so we made sure that every decision was made based on job duties, we didn't take into account anything else. Each institution's job description had to match our job description duties by a minimum of seventy percent in order to be considered a viable benchmark. Calculating the new minimum. For each position, there was a requirement to have at least three jobs from other institutions with a minimum of. with a minimum of a 70% match. Salary data also was collected from TASB, which is the Texas Association of School Boards. They offer, they do salary studies every year, not only for the ISDs, but they also do the community colleges as well. And we also looked at Coupa HR, which is a national group. They also do salary studies every year, and we were able to purchase access to those, that salary data, and that is a nationwide. We felt like it was just very important to include that in our analysis so that we weren't constricting ourselves just to a small number of institutions. For each institution, adjustments were made to take into account the cost of living for that area compared to ours, the years of experience and educational degree differences. And as you can see in the example below, we put in there, we had to make sure, especially on the TASB ISD numbers, we had to make sure that the duty days matched. So if the duty days were less, then we adjusted the salary to make sure it matched what our duty days were. And then on the degree match, so after talking with the VPs, we had quite a couple of discussions about this, to decide what would be an appropriate percentage to apply for degree differences. Based on initial criteria, it was quite high. If you kind of did the research to see the difference between someone making an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree, the difference in income, it was quite, it was quite a lot. So after we talked about it, we agreed upon 5% per degree. So if the institution that we were studying, if they required an associate's degree and we required a bachelor's degree, then we would increase that salary by 5% to bring it up to the educational level that we're at. And we would do that vice versa. So if ours was lower, we would then reduce their salary to bring it down to our educational level. We did the same thing with years of experience. So when we calculate salaries at TBCC, everybody gets one year, sorry, 1% for each year of experience above the required amount, and that is calculated into the minimum, and that's how we calculate their salary. So we took that same approach. So for each year of experience, it calculated at 1%. So if the years of experience was higher or lower, we subtracted or added depending on that calculation. And then there's the cost of living adjustment. So we had two websites that allowed us to put in specific detailed cities or towns that other colleges are in, and we were able to calculate the cost of living difference from there to here, and we took those two numbers and we averaged them out. And then that's how we came up with our cost of living adjustment.
What slide are we on, Janine?
Go up. There you go. So in the end, you come up with your adjusted salary or median minimum. When we looked at TASB and Coupa, the numbers that we got were median minimum amounts. So we stuck with that same calculation when we calculated ours. So we didn't go with the average, we went with the median, which removed any outliers. And then of course, the last column you can see there is what the percentage match was for that particular college against that job, the order that job was. Okay, initial job slotting. To ensure that classifications are being compensated competitively in comparison to the market, we proceeded to determine the placement of classifications within the proposed salary schedules using the result of the market salary survey as a guide. After initial slotting was complete, additional adjustments were made to maintain existing hierarchy and to account for the college's understanding and knowledge for each position, which cannot be computed, I'm sorry, cannot be captured through the PDQ or salary survey processes. So after we, and I was very transparent in when we talked with the VPs and the executive cabinet, that I knew this was not perfect, and that we were going to have to make some adjustments. And we've made some adjustments, and we just asked that they come to us, they sit down and talk with us, we review the information. We want to make sure that it's truly representative of what our employees are doing. Allocation of employees within the new proposed ranges. So for employees with current salary levels that exceed the maximum level in the assigned, or newly assigned range, I should say, the salary would be frozen at that level, and the employee would be ineligible for any raises until the range is adjusted to allow for movement. The placement of employees within the newly proposed salary plan is based on a formula designed to address internal equity. No salary for any employees recommended for reduction. Each employee has a calculated target salary and then is recommended for placement in the proposed pay rate. No salary will be calculated above the range maximum. Regardless of an institution's philosophy concerning advancement opportunities afforded to employees, it's essential that movements in the economy, and more specifically, the labor market in which the college competes, be addressed at system level. So one of the issues that we run into is that over the years, our salary ranges have not been adjusted. Now, I don't know all the exact reasons why behind that, I've heard stories, but all I can tell you is that they have not been adjusted, and we need to desperately do so. We are finding it very hard to continue to maintain and move forward and hire new employees at the current salary ranges that we have. Cost of living increases. Any cost of living adjustment should be applied to the entire plan. If the cost of living adjustment is applied to the base salary, then the employee would get that cost of living increase. Employees who are at the maximum of their salary range, who are not eligible to additional compensation, can receive the COLA adjustment, as long as the adjustment brings them back into the range, but nothing above that. Plan implementation. We are recommending that the new compensation structure go into effect as soon as feasible, along with the recommended salary adjustments. For those employees whose current base pay exceeds the proposed salary in the new range, no change is recommended to their salaries at this time because they are paid within the proposed salary range, which reflects current market conditions. We recognize that the implementation of a new or revised compensation and classification program must consider the financial disposition, current salary levels, and other variables you need for the college. Only after all of these factors are considered can a feasible implementation program be designed. We have worked to provide an implementation option that will permit the college to address the current inequities and will provide a framework for external competitiveness. It is especially important that during the current economic times that the college retain its highly qualified workforce by providing a fair and competitive compensation program. Additionally, it's equally important that the college does not overpay for positions. The proposed implementation plan carefully attempts to balance these two important considerations. The foundation of the implementation calculation is one that is forward-looking. It does not look back on how current salaries came about. The transition to the new plan is not meant to change every pay decision, promotion, or other legal changes in salary that have occurred over the tenure of the employee, nor is it meant to pretend the new pay structure should be retroactive in concept to the day the employee was hired. To the extent that any uniform formula may result in unintended consequences, there may be isolated instances where administrative adjustments will be needed to address an inequity that is not readily apparent. This is not intended to address internal equities perceived by employees that might result from previous pay structures or previous pay decisions. TBCC HR assumes that all previous salary changes were based on information that was considered valid and appropriate at the time the decision was made. As part of the overall study, observations and recommendations regarding personnel policies and processes directly related to the implementation and subsequent administration of the proposed pay plans were discussed. Implementation costs. We have calculated a target salary for each employee that fairly inequitably makes an adjustment. If the employee's current salary exceeds the target salary, then the calculations do not provide any further adjustment. No employees recommended for any decrease in salary, even if the current salary substantially exceeds the target salary. We do recommend that any employee whose current salary exceeds the target salary should continue to advance through the ranges until they reach the range maximum. No employee should receive any additional salary adjustments once their salary has reached the maximum of the range. The recommendation is to freeze the salary until there's sufficient market adjustment to provide an increase. On exhibit 6.1, which is also on page 44, shows an implementation cost for the option that we feel is the best fit for the college. The number of employees impacted by the change are also listed with the average adjustment for those receiving adjustments and the average magnitude of the change on the impacted The objective of this job classification and compensation study was to improve the internal and external equity of both the structure by which employees are compensated, as well as the way positions relate and compare to one another across the institution. This was accomplished by analyzing data gathered internally and externally, which informed the recommendations made in this report. So by combining the market data with the internal data gathered through the PDQ process, we were able to make recommendations which improve the equity and competitiveness of the college's pay structure, I'm sorry, college's pay structure, and the placement of classifications within that structure, using the market data that was obtained. For the 2021 fiscal year, by adopting the proposed salary schedule and grade order list for the 2122 fiscal year, the college's salary schedule will move to an at-market for all positions, TBCC. The recommendation in this report provides a competitive compensation structure internally aligned with the classification structure and system administration practices that will provide TBCC with a responsive compensation and classification system for years to come. While the upkeep of this recommended system and associated pay and classification guidelines will require work, the college will find that having a competitive compensation and classification system that encourages strong recruitment and employee retention is well worth the effort. And lastly, I just wanted to discuss some of how, I wanted to look at how we got here. I really feel like right now, especially in my area and with employees, we're kind of at a crossroads. And I really feel like that, we really, I really feel like we need to make a decision on how we're going to proceed in having a compensation structure here at the college. Since I have been here, the structure has been non-existent. And I can go back and blame the past, and we can point fingers, but ultimately, that doesn't get us anywhere. I just, I really wanted to bring forth a plan that we could be proud of, that Dr. King wanted to present to the board for approval, and that the employees could stand behind. So some of the reasons why we're here right now is 2011, there was a failed salary study that was performed. I was not here, that was before my time, I'm speaking from stories that I've heard. And due to an implementation issue, it was halted. And as a result, only a small portion of employees for their departments were studied, and only a portion of those employees received increases. That left a very bad taste in the mouth of a lot of our employees who didn't get studied and who didn't get to see any benefit from that. And I can tell you to this day, I still hear people complain about it. It has left a very deep scar in this campus college. Our current salary range data for positions are out of date, some are more than 10 years old. As retirements occur, especially with longer-serving employees, salary data is non-existent. When this occurs, we are forced to reevaluate the salary information. This causes other positions on campus who have not been reevaluated to feel undervalued, and employees are seeing positions that are being posted for a higher range, yet the open position has less responsibility and knowledge, skill, and ability requirements. And this leads to inconsistent internal equity comparison and continues to perpetuate employee We currently do not recognize salary caps. So we have employees who are working here today that are above the established ranges that we have in place right now. So this allows employees to be paid at a higher amount than what we have set forth. As the college continues to give raises, the salary expense for employees compounds. This is allowing for costs to continue to increase with no limitations and allows for no control over expenses. Currently, our faculty salary schedule has errors, and when it was created, the methodology was flawed. This caused therefore be, this has caused there to be misinformation and has created a nightmare situation for HR to try and mitigate. I want to draw your attention to rows three and four and rows seven and eight in that picture. As you can see, the numbers are exactly the same. So when we are, and I just, we just ran into this yesterday, as a matter of fact, I'm sorry, not yesterday, last week, we had a faculty member who's coming in that has seven years of experience. And when she called back, she said, well, you know, I have, I actually have eight. And so we said, okay, we'll give you eight. It's the same with that. And how do you explain that? I'm sorry. You know? I can tell you the story behind it, but if I told you, you would probably shake your head. And it's just that the reasoning behind it was just not, to me, it's not logical, but it is what it is, and we've just had to fix it. Once I showed Dr. King this, and Dr. King wasn't even really aware that this existed, he was pretty evolved by it and just said, you know, we just can't use it, it's just not, not feasible, so. We consistently have been in the lowest-ranked salary ranges for faculty for years. This is partly because the starting salary amount has not been changed since the 1415 fiscal year. That number should be adjusted as well with a COLA increase. And lastly, and then I'll be quiet. Inconsistent internal equity. There have been salary decisions made that have created internal equity issues. For example, a guidance associate two on a satellite campus has a higher salary range than the academic workforce advisor on the Athens campus. When you reflect on the position and the associated job duties, the jobs are exactly the same. Therefore, the pay for the position should be equal. Another example is positions paid on the faculty salary schedule that are not faculty positions. These positions have had the ability to get an increase in pay due to additional educational attainment, while other staff who are paid on a traditional salary range do not. In the past, when an employee moves to a new position, even if the salary range is less than their current position, the employee has been allowed to keep their current salary. This causes compression issues and inequity issues within the department. And we currently have positions that we are unable to fill. We have had qualified applicants apply, and we are unable to get a salary amount that they can come to the college here for. This is especially prevalent in the accounting business office, nursing instructors, and I did leave out campus PD, that should also be listed on there as well. And I know David can speak specifically to some of the issues that he's having in his area, but. And that's pretty much the gist of it.
Does anybody have any specific questions for Janine, or general questions for Janine?
I do have a little concern. I mean, if you go do a study and you're going to fix things, I don't understand why somebody that's supposed to pay can't have people produced. And if nobody wants to be reduced, don't get me wrong, I understand that, but if you want to be fair, then that's what's the call for you. I don't understand why all you can do is raise a table. It's just a matter of, if you want it fixed, or you not want it fixed. And if it's fixed, you've got to play no side.
I agree, and that's why we definitely propose that we treat any salaries that are above the range.
I know that, I mean, you know, that's, that's talking out of both sides of the map, but we do that. I mean, I know it's high, but don't get me wrong, it's just, I don't understand. I do understand it, actually, if you're going to fix it, fix it.
I can tell you that we only have three employees right now that are over that.
I'm going to get you a pair of them.
Dr. King, does the board have all the same information that was presented to the budget committee?
Yes.
Was it sent on to them?
Yes.
Okay, I guess that's in the last, well, since we met on Thursday.
The day, the day, the day we met on Thursday, I sent it to Mexico. And they got, should have gotten it on Saturday.
So Texas, so everybody had.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm not going to, I'm not going to dwell on it. We had quite a discussion on Thursday, and I'm sure we'll have more. This, this may be, this may be a pathway to something better than we had. It's, it is a bit surprising that professional leadership that's been sitting here for all these years and not telling the board, we haven't moved this scale, we haven't changed any of that, you know? You've been leading for five years, you've been doing a good thing. I don't know who's talking to who, but you know, I know the board has been hearing that, well, these scales are way out of bounds, we need to work on these scales and look at those. We talked about an increase, which usually revolve around a percentage, sometimes hard dollar amounts, and for the reasons associated with those. Okay, be that as it may, that's, that's history. I'm going to, I'm going to make this statement and then stop there. For a, a, a. For a, a comprehensive study that involves impacts, impacts everyone here. And, and also impacts the college staff. I, I think this tweaking was about a million dollar price tag that it would take pretty much for, for the first time. What you want to do right now, get it, get this thing rolling, get it close. I believe you stated that we started this work in December 2020. I saw this work about one week ago, about a week ago. So, uh, you can expect me to become sufficiently educated. To, to understand and agree with everything that's in there, which I, I want to do. But I can't get there in the time period. And to have it rolled out for the budget committee to take care of this, this wasn't even coming to the board. So we had that discussion in budget committee, is that right?
No, no, you're, no, you're, you're.
Okay, which part's not right?
The, 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 uh, information regarding this did not go to the budget committee until a week before the budget committee met. And which I got it, I, I sent it out to everybody on June 1st, you know, in, in an update. I provided, I provided an update talking about the study on June 1st, you can go back and look and see. I got the, I got it on May 23rd. So I mean, again, we're, we're, I understand it's, uh, it's takes a lot of effort, takes a lot of time. And it's gonna take a lot of back and forth to be able to get it worked out.
Yeah, well.
But I think you can.
I, I, I'm going to, to say again, that to have my attention directed to a study, I got the package, not much more than we should have. I mentioned it in another day, on a Monday morning thing like that.
Right.
Not the same thing.
I don't expect.
Handing Ron David the book and saying, I, I need you to, to get with this because we're not, we're not asking the board to approve everything.
No, we did not, we're not asking the board to approve anything and we did not ask the budget committee to approve anything. All we were doing is bringing it up, starting the discussion of it. We're not asking for approval, we didn't ask you for approval last Thursday. It was an introduction so that you could learn more about it and so that we could, we could get together and discuss it. No approval. If there is an approval, it would be at the July board meeting or mid-August board. Which we hope would give plenty of time for everybody to discuss it, back and forth, etc.
Okay, alright, I'll accept that, but I'm still gonna understand what you're saying. That's not time to, to do the work that needs to be done for, for everybody on this board. To be able to fully grasp what's in here and what it means initially and then going forward over time. I hope that we'll be fine, and I think Janine, that are y'all and job and others who are involved in it. I'm not suggesting that we can't make better what we have.
Okay.
But I think that work needs to be, cannot be done in time to, uh, roll it into the best.
May not can. It, it may not can, that's why we brought it up and that's why we're discussing it, so that we can determine if it can or if it can't.
That's not the recommendation that you were referring to when we opened this conversation.
Absolutely not.
Ask the board to.
Absolutely not, I'm not asking a recommend, I'm asking a recommendation to have further discussion about the possibility of moving forward with this. That is the recommendation that I told you last Thursday that I would come to the board tonight. I would, we would introduce them to this information and then we would be able to have further discussion before anything's done.
Well, Dr. King, to be clear, it wasn't even on the agenda until we had the budget meeting.
You asked me to put it on the agenda and we did.
That's correct, and that is why, because I felt this was something the board needed to be engaged in as a whole.
Okay.
So what I'm looking for and asking to see occur is to say, let this good work, not trying to cast it out. I'm saying provide abundant, provide more than sufficient time to do a good job of understanding what has taken your team. I said six months, maybe we need to make it five and a half to follow the dates that you, you mentioned. What difference does that make? But.
So what would be your recommendation?
Do that.
What's your, what's your recommendation?
Is that you separate this from this budget. It's not a budget committee function to rework this thing.
Okay.
And, and ask the board to determine who is going to be involved in, in working with that. I won't on anything, thanks for the idea, and I'm not gonna take this in under the umbrella of the budget committee. And say, we'll figure all this out, uh, and get it rolled into it before we got, we have about one line. And you know this from all the years past, that, that the window's closed to, to get a budget substantially constructed. We know when we vote and that kind of thing, but we don't have much time to work with and some things need to come together.
Okay.
So take this part out, keep working on it, but let's not try to keep it in the budget. With that, I'm done, thank you.
Okay.
And I think if we do that, we're gonna stall our entire employment process. We, we, we're already to 15% turnover rate in this school, which is horrendous, most of it is over money. Uh, we've got departments that cannot get people hired over money. And the longer we stall this, the longer we put pressure on the staff and faculty, and that's not fair to them from us. I think we need to put the work in to get this done, uh, during this budget committee, all of us. Or at least this budget committee needs to do that. And I think this is really more of a stall process of giving these people raises than it is anything else, David.
I'm gonna object to that, and, and if you want to make comments, let's be angry, direct them to the chair. Mine were directed to Dr. King and to the chair.
Well, I directed mine to you.
I will refute your statement that it is a stall.
Well, you certainly have the right to do that.
I do, and I do, I do very strongly.
Okay.
Because that would suggest some sort of sinister intent, and there is none. I think I said adequate for everyone here to understand my statement. And that statement was that this may be, this may be the, the greatest step in the right direction that we need to take. But in the time we've had it, and in the time that we're working with, under the framework of the budget committee, we cannot properly do that. I cannot.
We can, I think we can properly do that. We can properly manage this process of this salary study if we take the time to do it. And I'm not sure that's the effort that's being put in at this point, that we're really willing to take the time, that we're gonna move this weeks, months in advance. I think this is the most important part of this entire budget process, is taking care of the faculty and staff that we have before us. And I think to stall that is an injustice to them.
Is it possible that we could have a budget workshop? No, and I think I've heard knew that we discovered a problem. And with that problem, what can we do to fix what we've identified? Stalling, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but if we look at it with a level head. Salary has always been a sticking point in education. So we can pay our folks. We're not, we're not gonna pay them for what they work. But it shows some type of alignment that we're looking at some growth. We realize what we've been doing over the years is not adequate. As a board, when that was presented, we immediately began to try to fix it. We didn't placate, we didn't do, we began to work together as a board to address it. And those three, four that may came out in the study that's overpaid. Look at some type of structure, grandfather those to appear to time and phase that thing out. But however, we could come together as a board and put our minutes and time in to fix what's concerned. I think it'd create morale where everybody's concerned.
What's our job, David, to, and the other positions in here?
Currently, right now, we have seven?
Seven, I don't have many.
117 or 18.
So we, we've got more employees than that, right?
Right, we have, some have the same job.
Same job.
Individual jobs, we have about 118 individually unique jobs.
That's only seven unfit. That doesn't seem consistent with what you're doing.
But over the course of the year, we've probably, I mean, probably by the end of the year, we'll replace about 45.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just try to.
Yeah.
Tell these numbers a lot, in my head, if we've only got seven open positions, it takes me to a terrible place to work.
Well, I think one of the main issues that we're running into, um. Dr. Charlie, is that we're not able to get employees here with this current salary range that we have in place. And like I said, um, David, applicants can speak to them exactly that we've been trying to hire a senior accountant for how long now?
Several months.
And it's not due to a lack of applicants that are qualified. You know, it's, it's just, uh.
There's no question, I, I tell people, everything I've ever tried to help them see. There's no way you pay your best people enough, and there's no way you pay your worst people little. I mean, you just can't do it, uh, with your benefit structures and everything. So I, I understand what we've got some work to do and I'm not against doing the work, I just gotta get my hands around it. Because the one thing I'm hearing, you know, we can't hire anybody, you know, they have seven open positions, which isn't very good. I have not been saying whatever.
Right.
I'm sure.
I would love to be able to move forward in some way with, with doing whatever work that needs to be done. I think, I think we're ready to move forward if we can, if we can agree upon the work that needs to be done. And whether it can be done in four or five weeks, I, I can't tell you that.
I mean, I can tell you, I had that time.
Oh, I, oh, I know, and you weren't, weren't supposed to, I mean, we're just supposed to have it to be able to look at. Hopefully on the next, next few, few days, you'll have a chance to look at it, but.
I understand the nursing side of things.
Yeah, I know.
Sure, we don't pay nurses.
We don't.
Probably, they won't, but, but, especially going into our end of the year, but, uh, so I know there's work to do there. I know there's work to do in other areas. You start looking at technology people, computer people, what they can do.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the hardest.
Oh, yeah.
I don't care what business you're in.
Yeah.
They don't stay, and, you know, it's a challenging, like, I know we're gonna work through it, but I'm, I'm starting really to try to get my hands around it, but. I have not begun the process.
I understand, I understand.
The board, and just from my standpoint, I think Janine's pointed out my concern, you know, we've been given raises without a backstop. Of who's topped out, whatever, that's, that's what we're trying to do. I guess from a, a budget standpoint, I, I understand what David's saying, that this is a lot to digest, it was a lot to put together. Um, we just kind of felt like it had to be part of the budgeting process, otherwise you're gonna lose a year or some months. So, uh, we're here at the end of June, I don't know how much time everybody has, and I think that was. When I brought it up in the budget meeting is that's why I wanted to, let's get it to the board so we don't lose another 30 days. But, you know, not being able to hire people affects everything, what, what we can do for y'all, what we can do for the students. But I just was more concerned as a CFO about continuing to get raises with no information back in the, so.
The other, other thing I always struggle with, if we hadn't created any income. Right, if we didn't create any revenue, so, so, uh, you know. That, that creates a bit of a challenge, uh, when you're not creating a cash flow source to do things. That doesn't mean we don't need to do that, I do, I need to get my hands around it, and I don't have around it, so. I'm just gonna be honest about that, and try to dig in a little bit. Recognizing these things really contribute to my agenda.
Certain room, we, we don't answer great questions, anybody can ask, as best we can.
And Dr. King, I certainly would be, I can appreciate, um, and I had a conversation with that. A challenge, a piece of base, in a position that's, you know, is critical to our needs. That if, if, if we're at this point where there are exigent circumstances, that we certainly. To take some actions to loosen the band, if, if, if you will. With a, with a, a late-stage problem and, and try to help fix that. I, I don't mean to be insensitive to the fact that, that even though. A lot of us are sitting here saying, this is, this is pretty new. You know, because we didn't know you, you've been spending six months working on it. Uh, I wish I'd been, had some of that six months to be learning about it. You know, you get it, but you didn't have it done then, so you know, that's kind of how it goes. But I, I, I think we can be, I'm saying, tell us, we, we need to make some immediate adjustments. It's not gonna fix the institution, but as everyone, I think, has contributed to the annunciation of the, of the problem. It didn't happen overnight, it took years and years to develop. And I just don't think that if we can just declare, this is it, let's do it. I don't so, Janine, you're a genius, and you probably are, but, but I, I can't get there that same. And, and I think we have a lot of other things to talk about too. This particular plan is a million dollar price tag, and then it goes on more or less forever compared to that, or, or up. And we're sitting here funding our next year budget plan with $2 million coming free of charge, if you will, courtesy of the appraisal business. Not revenue reproduced. We have gone backward in nine of the last 10 years. We'll talk about those things more in our budget meeting. But we have to get it in perspective that we're solving problems with federal government money through the end of, with 3.80 year, if you average for the, the age of some that's left. Plus the two that we're reaching out dragging in from taxes. And the government, the HERF money, it's gonna disappear in the next budget cycle. But yet, we're gonna, we're ready to go ahead and stack it in, I just think you have to, really have to look at all of that. And, and, and take the time to, and there may be some that can spend every single day. I cannot, I won't. But I will do the best that I can. But $10 a month only goes so far, the rest of it's just love for the institution, you know, still have a job to do. So that's all I'm looking for, I'm not trying to rain on, on anything. I, I'm just saying, I don't think we can get there as quickly as, as what you put in front of us, to what it suggests.
Do you have a solution? Or do you have a solution, a way to start moving forward?
I, I think a way to start moving forward would be to say to these guys that are in, in distress with regard to, uh, positions. To tell us about it, tell you about it. You pull us together and say, I need to do these things right now. Again, that's stock, yeah, that's a Band-Aid, I'm, I'm not at all advocating, that's, that's just how we go on career. And then, let's take what we have here and start working with it and getting our, our understanding in place. Uh, to the budget committee, but the whole board, everybody's gonna vote on that thing.
Okay, anybody else have any other?
How much important, I'll tell you about it, Dr. Easton, and I thought it's a good observation, what can we do?
Absolutely.
Tell people that we're shooting for. I, I, I think it is correct to say that, that if, if you don't, if you don't set a bar somewhere or an expectation, then it just lingers, it just doesn't move. Maybe that's some of what happened internally, uh, when you guys never set a bar to, to get something in front of us to talk about. Uh, it's not all on the board, we get it from, from you all, but let's say then that, uh. If, if we absorb and the time we're next together, that we could say, well, a reasonable timeline is 90 days, something like that. This budget that we go into, it's like every other budget. It's not cash in time, it can be amended, this, this can be inserted at any time. This, this can be inserted at any time, and adjustment made. If it's a million bucks, it's a million bucks. If it's something different than that, then, then something different. I'm trying to stall, most assured, that's not the goal. I just want to move in a way that I, I can feel comfortable, that I understood what I was looking at, and I agreed with it.
Would you recommend that we have a meeting among the full board in the near future regarding?
We just need a chance to look at what you give.
Right, I got that. But would you recommend, for now, July, a board meeting, if we have an opportunity to discuss it, or what?
I, I, I don't know about that, I think that depends. Why don't you let everybody adjust it, and then, then start telling people what they think? Call you, send you an email and say, Jerry, I'm
Okay.
I'm ready to, ready to sit down and talk some more about this.
Or why don't we just ask right now, if we're sitting here, we can have another meeting?
Well, they have adjusted it.
Well, it's gonna be, the next meeting would be the time that we would talk about, hopefully that would be a timeframe that they could ingest it, and could go over it. Would that be two weeks?
Pleasure, Chris.
Steve, you were at the bu, board budget meeting, what are your thoughts?
Well, I have two or three thoughts. I see what's being proposed is very concerning in terms of salaries. I also see that you need some way to analyze salaries, get it more uniformed, so you can be competitive. I also go back to something Dr. Charlie said early in the meeting, and that was when he was looking at a budget without HERF funds involved, to really get a handle on where we're going next year. We can't predict, we can't predict, I mean, what you're telling us is a very favorable, and I mean, it's, it's a conservative from your standpoint, but it certainly points to higher revenues and, you know, due to the growth. But I think we, as Dr. Easton said, we have issues here that we've identified. I don't, you know, I, I, I don't think anyone here would philosophically disagree with having the bands that you talked about in the report, that I, as I understand it, to, to clarify what staff does and what, how they're gonna be paid and so forth. But we need to be, one of our best assets, valuable, valuable asset is the employees here. And I, I think we need to look at that, but we're looking at, as Trustee Monk said, a million dollars coming in on the budget, and we've got still some unknowns out there because of the pandemic. So I think that you're responsible not to consider what we're doing if, if, if it's at this level or another level somewhat. And it doesn't mean we don't work towards what it is, and it doesn't mean that we don't adjust the budget as we get down the road. I, for one, have looked into this, I've talked to Janine today, I've talked to David Hopkins quite a bit, I've talked to Jerry. I mean, I, it, it's been a learning process for me. I recognize there's some problems here, but I don't have a solution. And I think anybody here, which I, I, we've all might say we have, I mean, it looks good on paper, but I do take a little more time. Will it take sixty days, ninety days, six months? I don't know. But, I mean, I think we all need to be thinking about it, that was the purpose of the night. And I really feel that we need to address these issues, but I think it will take some time to just look at what if this happens, what if that happens, but come back at a reasonable period of time and make an effort to get down the road.
There may be a few things that need to be done urgently. I would like to know what those are, but to think that a problem that we didn't finish in two thousand and eleven, that's lingered on for ten years, and we're fixing to fix it in sixty days and doing it well, is unreasonable. I mean, I just, you know, it's, it's taken no, it's been going on for ten years. If we're doing something quickly is not as important to doing something correctly. And it needs to be dealt with, I'm, I'm for dealing with it, but I can't put a timeline and just say, hey, you know, we're gonna have this done in sixty days, right or wrong? And, and I can't get there. Will we come up with something that quick? It's possible, but unlikely.
Okay. If, if in fact the board's not ready, it's just, you see if I'm talking. But we've got two million dollars in contingency there. Let's, if, if we weren't ready on September first, we could move the money, whatever that is, whatever y'all decide, into contingency. And if it turns out to be October, or November, or whenever that the board is ready to take action, as David said, we can adjust the budget at that time. But I will say, looking back at two thousand and eleven, and what Janine and I talked about is we don't want to start adjusting positions piecemeal, that's what got us in trouble last time. And the other thing that happens, we talked about, well, phasing this in, well, the problem is that when you hire the new guy, he's gonna slide down the scale ahead of your old, your, your old heads that are here. And so it, it's one of those things where the piecemeal got us in trouble once before, we don't wanna do that again.
Not disagreeing, just trying to get something before you, if you have a problem that hasn't been solved in seven months.
Yeah, I mean, our issue may be more starting salary, we can try to deal with that. We, the reason for this is that if the board wanted to do something, all of these folks could post the scale, the new scale. Right now, all we can post is the old scale. And that's, that's where the rub comes in. But it gets, kind of gets back to the Band-Aid of, well, if Philip does this one, and I do that one, I just, I don't wanna create more problems.
Well, and that's bad for morale, I'm sorry, may I?
Sure.
That's, that's also bad for morale. As you mentioned, we've got people that are doing the exact same job on different campuses, making considerable money. That creates a morale issue that, that we have to try to deal with. And so we, we, we don't need that, we don't need to be able to say, well, I can't hire this particular position, so let me add some money into this, you know, into the hiring salary, because that's just gonna continue what we've been doing, that's, that's gonna continue the problem we've got now.
I think we are, thank you.
We, we, I mean, I, I think I can say we, and I certainly can say, ah, we'll solve this problem correctly. The things we solve. Maybe there's something we can equip, but I don't think we can fix one thing that needs to be done in the next sixty days, I think it's a while. You can do something, I mean, open your arm, you, you can do something, I just don't know if it's correct. And I won't make sure we get our hands, I, I've just gotta look at it, I don't know what I've got here, so, you know. Personally, so I just have to get my hands around it, maybe read it separately, I think.
My answer, I think, before we, yeah, everybody look at it, I'll ask the question.
Yeah, why don't we do this, and you, you said something about, well, why don't I give you an opportunity? We give you an opportunity to look at it over the next couple of weeks, and then you can let me know, contact me, and let me know what, what you believe would be the next best step. Would it be to meet together again before? You're right, it doesn't have to be done in a hurry. We, we, we really never, I mean, it would be nice, but it didn't have to be done in a hurry. But we just need to get it done, we just need to move forward with it.
And I want to tell you also, let's just put this out here, it is gonna be impossible, you know, we just go ahead. We have a complication, I believe, because we operate in different job markets. If you compete in the nursing market and metroplex, terrible Dallas versus in East Texas, it's different.
It is.
Okay? And we're, we're gonna have some struggles, we gotta figure out how we wanna deal with that. Because if you're hiring out of that metroplex market, it'll, it can blow your deal up here. And vice versa, if you, you can hire people sometimes here that you can't touch in Dallas. And, and that's just reality, that may not be popular, but it's the world I live in every day where I work. And we need to think a little bit about how we're gonna manage it, because it's real. And, and I know that I've sat around the table here and listened to a lot of discussions over the years, that I want to do everything the same for everybody, and that's great, but it's not reality. It's not the job market, we're gonna hire and compete. It's just reality, so.
And we are losing, we're losing valuable employees to Dallas College, calling it Terracotta.
Yeah.
You know, we're losing employees there to those institutions.
And, and, you know, that's a bit of a challenge to use those three colleges as a comparison for us, because you, you especially lose the ones that spend their whole life down here, and I don't think that sounds derogatory in any way. Please.
I like it, I like it here.
And I understand that, it, it's a choice.
That's right.
But you're on the work line, so, there are different, different competitive issues we have, unrealistic.
Well, and I, and to your point, Dr. Charlie, I just wanted to bring this up, too. I had, I said on an average that the college staff is twenty-three point three percent below the market minimum. And according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics and the U.S. Census Bureau, the average income for Henderson County, this is just Henderson County, I didn't go outside of any other service area, increased over the last ten years by twenty-four percent. So I don't think that this figure, the twenty-three point three percent below market, is an unreasonable figure to come up with, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I just, you know, even though we've used some of those outside, you know, bigger institutions, maybe those more metroplex-type institutions, I still feel like we're well within what has been happening for years. And, and I think it totally brings us along where we should be.
But do we have the data in here of other, other?
Only ones that we matched with the jobs, so. Does that make sense? And I didn't, yeah, I didn't include every single job that we looked at and, and the comparisons that we made, I didn't include that in that packet. I only provided an example to explain how we did it. If that's what, if that's something you'd like to have, I can provide that.
I just, I just gotta get my hands around it, I don't think I have it.
Oh, totally. It's a lot to digest, for sure.
Please let us know if we can help.
Absolutely. I mean, phone calls, emails, if you guys have any questions whatsoever, I, I'm available.
What is your greatest immediate need?
Well
The greatest immediate need?
We don't fix one thing, right? Next week, what will you do?
I don't know how you separate it.
I don't know, yeah, there's, unfortunately.
You gotta put the scales in place, but you gotta put the employees on the scale.
Right.
Otherwise, you create a morale problem, you know what I'm saying?
I think you should be in all days.
I would.
He didn't, he didn't like it either. Okay.
Yeah, I am available anytime, I'm at your guys' school, if you have questions, I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen.
I appreciate your information. I recognize there's a problem, and I will solve it, it will be part of the solution.
But, but, can I make a comment, if we discussed this at the budget meeting? And, and I've also had nothing to talk to Janine about this, that they, there were some scales that were balanced, like, for example, if you're in a metroplex, they tried to discount, they allowed a five percent or some percentage. I'm not sure how you came up with that percent, but they did discount and add to, given the standard of living in, in, in the bigger cities in a smaller town. But, you know, and I know you went with medium, not mean, but also, did you take frequency? And, and I think you did say, if you saw a salary that looked out of whack, to me, that may be frequency away. I figure a lot of times, I'm not that, never been, but frequency is, you know, much it repeats, the more frequent it is, or the less your frequent is, you throw it out altogether, and I guess that's what you
Yes, and we did do that. So when we were looking at other institutions, and we would find a job, and we're like, oh, wow, that, that actually matches. But then we go look at the salary, and if it was like way out of range of what we were seeing as the pattern for that particular job, we just stopped and we went back and reevaluated it to make sure that this is really what it is, and make sure it is a good match for what we were doing. Did, and did we find some of those? Absolutely. I mean, I found ones that I thought were gonna be a perfect match, and ended up not even being close. And so we were very, very diligent about the jobs that we picked or that we matched, and we made sure that every, see, all the duties were matched appropriately to that, you know, and, and every institution works their job descriptions differently. And so that was a very tedious process. We weren't able to use any software to do that with, it was literally by eye. We took each job duty list, and we put ours on there, and then we'd take that institution, and we would literally go bullet by bullet and, and make a comparison. And so it was, it was a very tedious and intense process, but we were very diligent and made sure that the jobs that we did match made sense. And that we weren't putting, you know, an eighty-five thousand dollar salary job with a thirty thousand dollar average-paid position, it just didn't make sense.
So when we, you compared us to Austin College, you took a, you took a negative like quality of life or cost of living?
Plus living, yes. Yes, and then we get any years of experience adjustment, any educational degree differences, we also adjusted it for that as well. And I would say about ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it worked out exactly the way it should have. It was, it was very, it was surprising on how well that, that whole process really did work, so.
We will work through this problem. I don't know if it'll be perfect, it won't be perfect, we'll get there, we'll get better. I don't, I just don't know what it's gonna take. We got the, we got them people, I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you all for bringing this, Dr. Easton.
Well, let, let, let me say the final thing. In all crack county, everybody sitting in this circle doesn't understand us at all. No, not at all. We don't even know what questions to ask. And so what has happened, the professionals have taken it on themselves to do this work. And when we pull it out of their hands, what we're really saying is we don't trust you guys. And I'm saying, I trust you guys. And I'm saying, I may not understand everything in a salary study, and I could read this from now to end of the year, and still may not understand it, but I trust you guys. And I think we, as a board, even need to look at it at this level, that we're never gonna understand this. We are not in human resources. We don't do salary studies. That we've, we've put in the hands of vice presidents and human resources, or human resource directors, do a job, and they've done a good job. And for us now to postpone this, I think what we relate to, not them, but everybody that's sitting in this room, and everybody that's watching on Zoom, is that we don't trust you.
I, I would disagree with that.
That's what I understand.
Because our responsibility here is not only to them, it's the people that fund the student. And we, whatever we agree to, has to be funded this year, next year, you're, it'll never go back, it will only go up. I mean, that's just what happens, benefits everything. And so our responsibility is to take their information where it is. But we have responsibility, people elect us with tax payments. And students pay the bills, taxpayers pay the bills, the state of Texas pays the bills through tax. And we've got responsibility there as well. It's not that we trust them enough. It's a matter of what our, for this year, responsibility is as well. And so I have some distrust of them at all. I trust them a lot, I think, I think they know what they're doing. But I, my responsibility is to others as well. So I'll just leave it at that. But I appreciate your comment.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, why don't we just sit on this, or sleep on this, or whatever you wanna call it, for, for next few weeks, and
Provide feedback back.
And, and provide feedback back to the staff there. And then if, if somebody comes up with a magic thought, that we, how we can get together and do it. and do it, study it, we'll, we'll do it. How about that? If not, we'll just keep.
We started, we started the process, we discussed.
Yeah.
Your thoughts. Let's move forward.
Okay. All right. Dr. Charlie, it's time to go home.
I'm going to mostly go.
Emotions made detective adjournment. All favors the eye. All opposed like stand. Thank you all.
10:22.